Good evening. Hello, hello? You can hear me, okay? Good evening. Good evening. Hello, hello? Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to this district board meeting and we're gonna have a quick change in the agenda, but we'll have a roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Chow?
Here.
Ms. Cartha?
Here.
Mr. Rikus?
Here.
Ms. Garrison?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Quattri? Here. And because we have children here present who are going to be recognized for some of their artwork, we're gonna flip around the agenda and welcome Nan Stein first. So she's the department chair of the art department, so she can give an update on the arts in District 65. And we're gonna roll call the change. Okay.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Quattri?
Yes.
Okay, hi. My name is Nan Stein and I'm the art department chair, honored and privileged to serve in this role and encourage all the creativity that goes on in visual and media arts with all your students. So I wanna first of all, thank everybody for coming tonight and let you know that there's an amazing show on the second floor in the hall. It is off of a poem by Maya Angelou inspired by a poem she had written and there are students' work from Nichols there. So the following students, if you are here, please stand up and be recognized. And their teachers are Mrs. Reitman, Mrs. Benson, and Mrs. Nava. Can you please stand up, please? Thank you. And also their principal, Mr. Harries, is here as well. Thank you. The students whose work is displayed upstairs from Nichols are Avery Bryant, Linaya Mayo, Ethan Webster, Camille Layden, Ellie Resendez, Megan Bazitis, McKenna Hersh Arnett, Zetian Eva Huang, Grace King, and Jack Martinez. So those students, great job. Great job. And I wanna share a few things with you of what the art department's been doing, some of their accomplishments in the last couple months. One is working with the city of Evanston in collaboration with the city in the "I Love Trees" contest. Students had submitted work to be in the forestry department's publication, a calendar, and note cards that were sold. So the following students, if you are here, please stand up and be recognized. Claudia Varne, this is their work is being projected. Dorothy Anderson from Nichols. Sophia Harper Kingsley. Evan Snyder from King Arts. And if any of the students would like, could we get a quick picture with Dr. Gordon? Can somebody, can you?
Sure.
Evan, if you would like to run over and get a picture, that would be great. Okay? And I'll just keep going and what we're asking for. And next, there's something I'm gonna share with you, 'cause I don't think many of you have seen these out this year, which is pretty unusual, but the snowplows. So as you know, a lot of our schools have painted snowplows. And I'm gonna go through and show you the honorable mentions first and then leading up to the winners. This was Chute Middle School. We have Dawes Elementary School. Haven Middle School. Nichols Middle School. Washington Elementary School. Willard Elementary School. Lincoln Elementary School. One Mayor's Choice. Mayor's Choice Award. And the next was the Best Theme Spirit Award going to Lincolnwood School. And Mrs. Vick, the art teacher from Lincolnwood, is here this evening. If you could please stand and have near your students, please stand and be recognized. And Mr. Hunter, the principal of Lincolnwood as well. Good job, you guys. Great job. Mr. Hunter. Come in.
He should get in the picture.
Mr. Hunter, you're off tonight.
You can trust her.
Thank you. And also really quickly, there's a lot of really amazing art that's being done in the district that's being shared in many public places throughout the community. And I just wanna flip through a couple display spots that maybe you weren't aware of or that maybe you've seen and was wondering where it was from. But this is the 65202 Show at Evanston Township High School. We've collaborated with them and we always do a poem. This year's was inspired by the poem by Maya Angelou, "Touched by an Angel." There's an image of people at the opening. Also, the city of Evanston at the civic center in some of the meeting rooms, we have art displayed. On the left, you'll see some of the art. On the right, you'll see some of the arts council members meeting. So in these meeting rooms, there are framed displays as well as hanging displays. The other, there is a really interesting exhibit at Little Beans Cafe. So if you check that one out, the art teacher, Marissa Hernandez, at Oakton is putting up work there. We also have the Evanston Art Center. We collaborated with them on a teacher professional development. I think we both had a great experience working in the community, keeping things in Evanston. So there's one of our art teachers silk screening and we're working on a piece for, you'll be very surprised when that's unveiled. And the upcoming shows we have on the horizon are the SOAR Show, which is at the Skokie Performing Arts Center, Three Crowns, which is a collaboration with Three Crowns in Lincolnwood School, in Haven School. And Ms. Vick and Mr. Aang work on that one together. And of course, the Yea Festival. Get your iPhones out right now, mark May 21st. No birthday parties, nothing, okay? Be there, alright? So I also just have a list of things that you might not be aware of, but this is what a lot of people are doing during their lunch hours, after school, all kinds of really progressive things. We're 3D printing in the district. We've got summer programs going on. We've got after-school clubs. We've got origami exhibitions all over. So just to make you aware of what's going on. And thank you again and keep those children creative.
Thank you, Dan. Those are wonderful projects.
Sorry to interrupt, but a black Kia minivan has its interior lights on, plate number If that's you, you might wanna turn your lights off. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we begin with our public commentary, I wanted to say a few words of welcome to everyone who's come. I particularly wanna welcome those parents and community members who've come to express concerns about both the ongoing achievement gap that we saw once again on our park results on Friday and about the needs of some of our special, our students of color in this district. So I wanted to also mention that we will open up public commentary to anyone who came to, who's come tonight, because we believe it's really important that we hear your voices. So if I could get a sense of how many people would like to speak, I know about 10 people signed up, but if we have more than we... Okay. Alright, so I think we'll have plenty of time. We'd also like anyone who is here to speak on these issues to leave contact information, phone numbers, or emails, because as much as we wanna hear you come and tell us your ideas and your concerns, we'd also like to engage in dialogue with you. So that would be great if you could leave some contact information when you leave. I believe that this is a very good time to open a dialogue about these issues, particularly given what's happening across our nation, in our very own city of Chicago, and even here in Evanston. So welcome, and let me say that we too are very sobered by the park results, which reveal a continuation of the achievement gap we have seen for so many years. I'd like to emphasize, this is of grave concern to all of us. It is not something that we have ever attempted to gloss over. In fact, our district is one of the first that was breaking out subgroups and looking at the gap for many, many years. I think I can speak for the board and probably for the entire administration that there's not one administrator in this district and there's not one board member sitting behind this podium that does not think, recognize that the achievement gap is the biggest challenge that we face as our district and that we need to be continually searching for new ways to address this. But we also realize that we can't solve it alone and we need your help, we need your input, we need your collaboration to help us make headway. We truly need your help. After public commentary, Paul's going to talk about the various ways in which the strategic plan is targeting the achievement gap, different strategies we have within the school. We also have the Cradle to Career Initiative across this city that's engaging community members and community partners in an effort for the whole city to take on this enormous challenge and this enormous problem. So we would invite anyone to the podium who'd like to come and share your thoughts about these critical issues and our only request is that you limit your remarks to three minutes and that we do not, abide by board policy and we don't call any board members, administrators, teachers, we don't call out individuals during our remarks. Thanks very much. Paula Zalinski was first on the list, although I don't think she... Oh, Paul, yes.
And let me also echo Tracy's comments to welcome everybody here for what is an open dialogue on issues around achievement, student achievement, and addressing the diverse needs of our community. And I wanna welcome you on behalf of the senior administration, many of the principals who are here in the audience tonight. And we are here to listen and to learn and to act and to work together, as Tracy suggested, in collaboration, in devising action steps, in devising ways that we can work together to make a difference in the lives of all children and especially those who might be struggling. So with that, I'll turn back to you, Tracy.
Okay, and I believe we need to quickly open our public, our levy, our public hearing for the tax levy before the commentary begins. I apologize for again reordering the agenda. The truth in taxation law requires that the district hold a public hearing on the 2015 aggregate tax levy prior to the board taking an action to approve the 2050 aggregate tax levy. Since the 2015 aggregate tax levy request is greater than 5% of the, above the 2014 aggregate tax levy extension, members of the public are welcome to address the school board regarding the proposed 2015 tax levy during this public hearing. Notice that the hearing was duly published in the December 3, 2015 editions of the Evanston and Skokie Reviews. Are there any comments from the public about the tax levy? If there are no comments regarding the tax levy, I hereby conclude this public hearing. The board will be voting for the approval of the tax levy at tonight's meeting. Thank you. And now I invite Bennett Johnson to the podium.
Chairman, members of the board, staff, people in the corps, fellow citizens. And I have to make a remark that I've been coming to the board meetings for a long time and hasn't been since 1970, that I've seen so many people of African descent at the board meeting. I congratulate you. I am a product of this system. Started Foster School, went to Noyes, Haven, and graduated from Evanston Township High School. I learned two important things in that process: tracking and racial discrimination. I did not let racial discrimination stop me because I had what they call self-esteem. I got it because when I was in second grade, I was living in 570 Millburn. Orienton School is about three blocks away and they wouldn't let my sister Joan and Ethel and I go to Orienton. So we had to walk to Noyes. And as we were going to Noyes, we see white kids going to Orienton. And of course, the first thing a young kid will say, "If I was white, I wouldn't have to do this." And then I said, "No, we got Joe Lewis, Mary Nannison, Paul Robson, they don't know who we are." And I've been spending the rest of my life telling white people and everyone else who African-Americans are. So that was my first important lesson and it helped me a lot. The achievement gap is something that is caused by low income, the lack of parental supervision, and we have to understand, black parents and Hispanic parents work from sunup to sundown. Not picking cotton anymore, but we do work a lot. We don't have the luxury of being a home parent, like many middle-class Caucasian women do and their families. So this is one of the causes for the lack of achievement on the part of blacks and Hispanics. Of course, with Hispanic thing, there's a language barrier, but also, black folks speak a different language as well, think a different way, different culture. All that means a lot because it's the teacher who is the other tool in this, this failure of this education system to handle black and Latino kids. So I say, what we need is not a plan of action, we need a plan and action. The facts are that there has been this issue for decades, and I didn't say years, decades. And litigation has been done instead of demonstration in some areas of the country. I think it's important for the school board and the citizens to understand that we should not take this anymore. It's been too long. It needs to stop. We stopped Jim Crow, we stopped slavery, we need to stop this new form of Jim Crow, the achievement gap. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Terri Shepherd. Good to see you all here. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I will echo Bennett's comments and say it's great to see so many folks here at this school board meeting. We've been coming here for about 20 years and it's great to see a packed room. So let's not digress. Dr. Goran, administration and members of the board. My name is Terri Shepherd. I live at 150 Barton Avenue. I come to you this evening as the chair of the Education Committee of the NAACP and as a representative of the following community organizations and citizens. The CHESMAN, Opal, which is the Organization for Positive Action and Leadership, the African-Centered Curriculum Group, Reverend Dr. Michael C. Our Neighbors, Second Baptist Church, Reverend Kenneth Eugene Cherry Senior of Christ Temple Missionary Baptist Church, Keith Terry, former District 65 school board member, Peter Braithwaite, Second Ward Alderman, and Dr. Henderson from Bethel AME Church. Sorry about that. Okay. We the undersigned respectfully request a comprehensive school board meeting to discuss the achievement of African-American students from preschool through the eighth grade. At this meeting, we would like you to address the following as a component of the annual achievement and accountability report you will present in January and February. How many children are enrolled in early childhood education programs at District 65? The number of children entering District 65 kindergarten after enrollment in the district's preschool programs? And what pre and post-assessments are used to evaluate these students? What is the intended focus on grades K through two grades? What's the correlation of grades to test scores in grades 3 through 8? Enrichment or remedial programs that are targeted for African-American students? What is the culturally relevant curriculum that is being taught at Chute, Lincolnwood, and Willard as discussed at a recent board committee meeting? We'd like a comparative analysis of test scores of the African-centered curriculum children and the two-way emergent, two-way emergent students at Oakton, a comparative analysis of Oakton African-American students and African-American students at other District 65 schools, the number of black students in special education due to behavioral issues or developmentally learning disabled. What is the role of the community school? Does the community school at Chute impact students and parents at the elementary theater schools? And lastly, in January 2015, the roundtable quoted board member Katie Bailey as saying, "The gap between black students from non-low-income households and white students from non-low-income households is almost 40 percentage points." We would like to know what the administration has done to address the gap between these non-low-income students. Please let me know when this board meeting will be scheduled to address our concerns. And I'd like to iterate, we'd like a full board meeting to address our needs, not just a couple of agenda items if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Darlene Marshall?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Darlene Marshall and I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and the education of my grandson as well as other, as other black kids in the community. Me personally, I feel that you all should have at least some black teachers in the schools, whereas these children would have a chance to communicate with people of their color instead of being judged because of, you know, somebody might wanna judge them, well, they just have behavior problems, let's scoot them onto the back. It's not all about that. These children need to be able to gain trust and have trust in those who are teaching them, as well as you all telling us what we need to do at home. We're doing our jobs. We're here tonight to see about what y'all gonna do to help them continue to do their jobs and see why these tests that you all give them a setup for the black kids to fail in the first place. That's my opinion. My opinion is, I've been through this with Dr. Goran and a lot of things that he spoke on in his email, I find offensive, because if I hadn't brought them problems to you, you wouldn't have never spoke up on them, just as well as you spoke about the issues about African-American parents coming to this meeting tonight anyway. So me personally, I think you all need to do something about, yes, educating our kids just like you do everybody else and stop dividing us according to where we live at, because we're all citizens of Evanston. Their parents vote. If it wasn't for us voting, some of you all wouldn't have y'all's jobs. If we can step up and do what y'all asked us to do, we think we need a little help from y'all too. Our kids count. Black lives do matter. Within the three minutes, that's all I have, but I do have more. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is an issue that we all feel very passionately about. It's our children here, but we do wanna remain civil and I'll reiterate, we don't call people out at the podium. Thank you. Camille Woods? I'm just, we don't mention people by name, we don't call people out at the podium. We're gonna try to keep this civil and it's something that we all feel passionately about, but the board policy is that we do not call people by names when we're addressing the board. Thank you. Camille Woods, please.
We're gonna share our three minutes. Cicely Fleming, I live at 1423 Kirk Street here at Evanston. I am also alumni of District 65 and have three children in the district now. And I'm here because, like others said, I am trying to be hopeful but very frustrated with the continued achievement gap. It's widening. I feel like it's 2015. I know since the 70s, there have been, the achievement gap has continued to widen, there's been all type of plans and meetings and initiatives and lawsuits, as Bennett said, and strategic plans, and all of this is happening as our children keep failing. And at this point, in this day and age, it's 2015, there's plenty of best practices out there. I know a lot of it, you know, comes with help from the parents as well, but I think we can't just keep passing the buck and saying, "We're going to investigate, we're going to plan." We have children who cannot read. There is no way they're going to go to 202, finish high school, go to college. We're preparing them to fail and particularly as a taxpayer, returning back to my lovely hometown, paying the taxes that I do. I'm not one who really believes in school vouchers, but at this point, I might start lobbying for them because I'm paying a lot and if I am not consistently on my children, on their teachers, about their grades and about the communication and expectations, I am not sure they're gonna succeed here. I don't know that we give a lot of weight to racial bias, that we give a lot of weight to implicit bias. I know the district has started working on that now this year, but my concern is if there's one consultant, we have many schools, it's gonna take many years for everybody to get up to stuff and in the meantime, our children are going to continue to fail and that really just can't be acceptable anymore. We can't look at any more plans. We really have to do something proactive. We have to engage the community. We can't continue to call African-American parents disengaged. We have to call them uninvited because that's how I feel sometimes as a black mother, even though I am home to raise my children, I sometimes feel unwelcome, but I have to get past that and do what's best for my children. So I just implore the community while we're here, I implore our board members, our staff and our teachers to really get past, you know, whatever it is that's hindering us, to talk openly about race and how that's gonna hinder our children, because we really can't afford any more children graduating these schools, going to ETS, graduating there, and they're unemployable. We're gonna have more crime, we're gonna have more of the things we don't like unless we really are truthful about what we're producing here.
Hi, I'm Camille Woods. I am the proud mother of three children and the president and founder of Stonewall 304. I am not from Evanston, I am from Highland Park. I moved here because growing up, I looked at the suburb to the south of me and was like, "Oh my God, it's utopia. I need to live there." Was I shocked when I got here? I decided to become a teacher and still during my being naive, I thought, "I wanna teach in Evanston because it's diverse and I can be with my people and I can teach everyone, whatever." and I can be with my people, and I can teach everyone," whatever. In 2004, I was blessed, I took a job at Haven to teach science. I lasted one year. In 2010, I was invited back to be an academic interventionist. I said, "Okay, I'm going to work with the at-risk students," you know. I was called in, the crux of the job was to build relationships with these kids and their families, shadow them in the classrooms, and figure out what was wrong with all these brown and black kids, because they were all brown and black, who just can't work and achieve in our district. So, when we all, the interventionists, and there are a rainbow of colors, it was not just Black interventionists, there are about twenty of us, we would reconvene, and we would have meetings, and we would say, "There is nothing wrong with these children. What is happening is the inequities in the classroom. These teachers that are in place do not know how to teach these children." 2012, I left the district again. Stonewall 304 was birthed out of that experience. I decided, "You know what? I need to go fight for the families who cannot fight for themselves, who are treated as if they are not welcome. The kids who are labeled to be problematic, they're not doing anything." And to disclose some of the things that I saw. I'm Camille Woods, President of Stonewall 304.
Elise Berry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marlena Davis. I am a resident of Evanston, Illinois, have been ever since birth. I am also one who has gone through District 65, obviously. Go Lincolnwood, go Haven, anyway. Go Lincolnwood, go Haven. I'm here to represent, obviously, Black people in this community, as well as my son, who is a sixth grader at Haven Middle School, who also has gone through Kingsley for one year, and was told that he was, had social issues. Also, moving over to Betsy Rhodes, where he was asked to be tested for an IEP at third grade, and then again at fifth. So, I'm here to represent my son first and foremost, and then everyone else as well, if that's okay with you all. I wanted to address the education that's given to all of the children, but more in particular, Black children, especially Black boys. And what has happened, what I've seen in my experience with my son, like I said, at third grade, he was asked, or I was asked to do an IEP on him. I refused, because they tried to label my son as having a learning disability. That is not true. Again, in fifth grade, he was also asked to have an IEP, and I had to fight for that. Finally, I gave in. And I said, "Go ahead and do your IEP, there's nothing wrong with my son." And of course, they found, "There's nothing wrong with my son." See, I want to explain, there is a difference between a disability and a delay. See, when one has a disability, it means they are disabled to learn anything, or to learn what you are teaching them. But when they have a delay, it just means they need a little bit more time. Okay, that's not a special education child, and that's not a disability. Just because children don't learn at the rapid rate of everyone else does not mean that they have a disability. It just means that they need more time, or it needs to be taught a different way. Which brings me to another point. Teachers don't know how to teach, not anymore. See, when I was in school, I had teachers like Mrs. Samson, Haven Middle School History, Mrs. Willa Williams, Haven Middle School Science Teacher. In high school, Mr. Brazil, math teacher. See, I learned, and I got an A in Mr. Brazil's class, but got a D in Mrs. Rainbow's class. Teachers like Mr. Mole, these are all Black teachers who I happen to relate to. I don't want to hear about a hiking trip that your son did in Mrs. Rainbow's geometry class. I don't care. I really don't. But the other children did, so where's the balance? So I wanted to talk about that. There is a lack of Black teachers in District 65, even my son being in Betsy Rhodes. Over the time he was there, from first grade through fifth grade, I seen teachers just go away. I believe right now, there may be just one, and she's a social worker. So, moving on, the children can't relate to these teachers. Why? Because y'all can't relate to us. And therefore, when you all cannot relate to us, you deem us as being behavioral, and want to label us as ADHD or ADD, when that's not in fact true. What that means is that we might want to learn a little bit differently than just teaching on the chalkboard. That's boring. Let's get up, let's be interactive. And I'm pretty sure a lot of teachers do this. It's just not the same way that everybody else does it. You know what I mean? So if I can come in and teach my son and other children who I've tutored on the side, and they get it, but they can't get it in the classroom, what's wrong? See, teachers, I believe, need to be able to teach in all facets, not just one or two. But if you know you have a group of kinesthetic learning children, let's focus on that. Let's make a lesson that's going to hit every point. And I'm pretty sure teachers do do that, and they probably try. It just doesn't work for us. So maybe, I think, if more parents, you know, get involved with the school, this is to you all now, because we have to take self-accountability. When you get more involved with the school, and you see what's going on in the classrooms, and call the teacher, and email the teacher, and be on top of your student, right now, my son has to have his teacher sign his assignment notebook to make sure that he wrote the assignment down correctly, so that there is no, "Oh, why didn't you do your homework, I forgot." No, 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 no. You have to be more involved, be on top of your child, be more disciplined with your child, you know, and then let the teachers know, "Hey, I'm here. I've sat through a whole day of sixth grade with my son this year. They know me, they will know me, and you all will too." So therefore, I apologize, am I over my three minutes? I don't know. But I just want to make, and I apologize, I have not been at a board meeting ever. This is my first one, but I will be here next month. Okay? If you need my help, I'm here. My name is Marlena Davis, D-A-V-I-S, Marlena, M-A-R-L-E-N-A. Okay? And I like you, I remember you from Kingsley. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm a little less, I don't know, blame the victim. And I figured I needed a way to explain to you my point. And I thought about a family member of mine who was outside in a car while a crime was being committed. Now whether she knew the crime was being committed or not, she ended up being convicted of conspiracy. And if you ask me, these numbers that everybody's talking about haven't changed in a hundred years. So in essence, this school board, and every school board that's ever been in this room, has sat in a car while a crime was being committed. And then you want to sit here, and, you know, I understand about parental involvement and all that, but these people give you their money, their product is their children. If Ford Motor Company, every one of two cars was bad, it would no longer be in business. You guys can put out a bad product, year after year, not decades, Bennett, a hundred years. So in essence, you are co-conspirators in the crime of killing an African-American community that was once powerful. Now you may not like this, and I'm not going to call out names, and that's fine. I won't call out names, but you know what? I learned a lot of stuff on the street. One of the things you got to know is, when you're guilty, you're guilty, and y'all are guilty.
Elise Berry.
My name is Alice Barry, I live in Evanston. When I saw a graphic about test results and suspensions in Evanston schools, I wanted to speak. I work in personal growth. I help people overcome shame and feel better about themselves. In that realm, I am an elder. I am known as someone who has looked at herself a lot. And yet, last April, I discovered that there were biases in me that I was not aware of. They were unconscious. I read an article by Dr. Robin D'Angelo about the resistance of many so-called white people to talking about race and racism. I say so-called white people because whiteness doesn't actually exist, at least in any scientific way, just as race doesn't exist in any scientific way. Human beings started in Africa, and our DNA does not distinguish between us using this theoretical concept we call race. So race doesn't exist, but racism does. I thought at that time that racism meant being abusive of somebody of another race, and that is part of it, but it's only part of a bigger picture. The bigger picture is that racism is a system. It's how American culture is set up to give more resources and more power to white people than to people of color. When I saw that graphic, I saw that Evanston schools are part of that system, so that white kids do better and are punished less often than Black kids. So I'm sharing with you what the article said is the most fundamental thing people need to understand, that it's possible to be a nice person, a good person, and be doing everything you know about and still be a racist. Because what racist means is being part of that system and not doing anything to change it. In order to end this system called racism, I believe each of us has to look at our own unconscious biases. I went looking last April, and I was stunned by what I found. According to the article, I was clearly a racist. It was not a good feeling. I urge District 65 to get anti-bias training, as I am doing myself, for all teachers and staff, from professionals in the field, and to do it now. And let that training affect your hiring, and let it affect how you react to kids in the classroom. And keep getting training until the achievement gap is gone. I believe we owe it to all our kids to have the humility to educate ourselves about ourselves, and then to educate them about this system Americans live in, and how we and they can work to change it together. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Andrea? Quintana? Quintana?
My name is Andrea Quintana, I live in Prospect Avenue, Evanston. I'm speaking to you today because I want... I'm too short. Can you hear me now? There we go. I'm speaking to you today because I want... I just got started. Are we good? All right. I'm speaking to you today because I want to improve achievement for our struggling students, and I believe it can be improved, even within the financial constraints we find ourselves today. I have degrees in engineering and physical therapy, and I am a mother of three special needs children. And I just want to break off here saying, I am not ashamed of my children's disability, and it is a learning difference. We all struggle with different challenges, and it's nothing to be ashamed of. And we just need different things. All of those are problem-solving fields. I have ideas that might help any struggling child. I've got my own clinical laboratory in my home, after all. My concept is to reduce the drag on the child in the classroom itself. Almost any disability in the school exists in a continuum. We arbitrarily set a line which becomes a disability worthy of attention. But even at a low level, it's an added drain on the human's capacity. A child with a mild attention problem, or who is struggling with some executive function problem, has less available bandwidth for learning. Let's get some simple supports into the classroom that will decrease those struggles. In engineering, you can improve the speed and the distance a car can go on one gallon of gasoline by making it more aerodynamic, reduce the drag of air friction. Humans are complex organisms that function as one large system, while also engaged within the larger system of the environment around them. Let's try to reduce the drag on all our kids, so they are more available for learning. I believe that we can use some very simple support tools that are often used in special education to achieve that, for any kid. When we are faced with common education problems, we often think of the typical solutions, but ones that are often costly and staff-intensive. Let's expand our options. I have many ideas around this, but since I only have three minutes, I'm going to give you one example that I am helping to make happen right now. This past weekend, I coordinated a presentation at Ovington about the power of visual supports in the classroom for all learners. As a result of this little project, we are going to have a library of visual icons and schedule strips available to the teachers, so that students, regardless of identified educational label, may have a simple visual schedule to help them keep on track in the classroom. It doesn't matter if it's an auditory processing issue, executive function problems, an intestinal problem, or even just a kid having a bad day. Just give it to them and see if it helps. It's inexpensive, and I harness the willingness of our school community to help each other to laminate, cut, and stick Velcro on the back of the icons. It will now be easier for a teacher to provide a visual schedule to any student who may benefit, even just as a trial. I think it will decrease noise and chaos in the classroom, free up the teacher for teaching instead of classroom management. The child will spend less time confused and off-task, feel more competent, and be more available for learning. Don't worry about the stigma, that will decrease when more kids are using them. They get to give them up when you give up your iPhone. Don't worry about dependence. A child who is learning and feels safe and supported will throw them away when he or she is ready. Use them to decrease the other kinds, types of demand drag that can interfere with learning in the classroom. There are many such possible tools, quick, easy, inexpensive. I challenge all of us to rethink what solutions might look like, to recognize that sometimes a little bit of money and effort upfront can result in savings of both money and time later, with the result of more progress being made in the end. Think different, question conventional wisdom, repurpose things to see if it can help beyond its usual use. I would like to start seeing this happening district-wide, but it will need some leadership from above. We have parents coming in for fluency reading, for tutoring in our middle schools, now for math assistance, why not this? I could easily get a cadre of parents to come and make this happen with just a little bit of material, a place to do it, maybe a cup of coffee. All I need is some leadership.
Richard Dyer.
Good evening, everybody. Hope you can hear me. Take my hat off. I am a proud member of Phi Beta Sigma fraternity, Culture for Service, and Service for Humanity. And I firmly believe in that, because those were some of the principles that I was taught right here at Evanston Township High School. I was taught that school was about a community. And I've been away for ten years, and I've come back to notice some very frightening things. And I went to a meeting, and those numbers were just, I couldn't believe them. Because I'm a graduate of the class of 1991. I went right here to King Lab, went to Timber Ridge, went to the high school. So I know how important it is to have Black male teachers in the classroom. And I'm wondering to myself, shameless plug, but a person like myself that has two master's degrees, has taught in CPS for ten years, has worked at a charter school that has graduated three hundred young African-American men from Inglewood, and gotten them to college, a hundred percent acceptance rate, can't even get an interview here, as a former graduate. I don't want to talk about the racial differences, because there obviously are differences. But one thing that I've learned is that I didn't experience racism until I left this little bubble. I went to Southern Illinois Carver now. I chose this prestigious fraternity because it showed me something that other fraternities didn't show me. From Dr. George Washington Carver to the Honorable William Jefferson Clinton. Clinton. It's not about the exclusive them, it's about the inclusive we. And as a community, we've lost that. It's no longer about we, what we can do. I'd like to address something that Alice Berry said. I had some great teachers growing here, from Quincy Carter to Clayton Taylor to William Branch to Ms. Dolores Tucker. And I bring her up last because I want to teach you all something. I'm a history teacher, so I have to bring it up. And I speak passionately. Everything's from my heart and off the top of my head. Ms. Berry brought up racism. Racism is a power structure. It's about injustice, and it's bred on hate. Ms. Dolores Tucker, Ms. Rhonda Pritikin over there at King Lab, those were white supremacists. And I say that, and I want you to think about what I'm going to get at, that you want to deal with a white supremacist. You want to. Because anybody that is supreme deals with you in a prospect of love. They deal with you in justice. They don't see themselves in terms of above you. A racist does, because they want the power. That's what they're into. A supremacist, like if you believe in a supreme being, deals with you in the concept of love. That's what I'm getting at. See, words, like I tell my students, words have the power that we attach to them. They truly do. And we all need to take a look at these numbers and ask ourselves, what does RTI look like in our high school? What does it look like? And for those of you that don't know what RTI is, it's Response to Intervention. Every child is not cut out for college. That's just what it is. There's nothing wrong with that. But there's also nothing wrong with teaching them entrepreneurial skills, teaching them a trade. And the thing is, is that in that building, we already have those things to teach kids to be entrepreneurs, to work for themselves, and be proactive and be productive. I know this because I went to college, got my bachelor's degree from Southern Illinois. Oh, I partyed. It was a party school. But you know what I also look back at? I had something that got me through my four years, and you'll never guess what that was. A little yellow book. Little yellow book that taught English, that I could take with me. Chandler's. I understand they're not around anymore, but I had Chandler.[787.12][787.12](LAUGHTER) I had two of them. One was for decoration, and one was for actual studying. We have to get back to those things that made our students special. I went to Carbonale as a freshman and didn't have to take not one remedial course because I was already head of my CPS counterparts. I was already head of them. So, I know that I'm a success story, and I know it can be done, but we have to get back to where we have teachers in the classroom that actually care. Like I said, Ms. Taylor had an assignment, and I still give it to my students to this day, called Project Search. I would challenge anybody in here to tell me who Hyrum Revels is. I learned that in 1989 as a freshman. Hyrum Revels, the first black U.S. state senator. Now, I'm just putting that out there for you to know, just putting it out there, how information sticks with you. When a teacher puts in effort, and there's things that we can do and bring in as teachers to teach our kids. I see that people are talking about deficiencies in their kids, and that's fine, but there's so many ways to teach. There's auditory learners, there's visual learners, and there's tactic learners. And a teacher can do all three of those things in the classroom. I know it's my time to go, but I had to speak with some passion. Got an email from my high school buddy, Ms. Fleming, so I felt that I just moved back here, and I felt that I owed it to my community, and I just love Evanston. Even though I was away, I still kept up with the school.[900.12][900.12](APPLAUSE)
If anyone else would like to step forward, feel free to at this moment. If you could just give us your name.
Hi, I'm Rena Campbell, from 1527 Melford, and I am a District 65 and 202 graduate. I care deeply about Evanston. I love that when I look around, I see so many people that I consider really close friends and people who really bring this place together. And I love that this is the first time I have seen this mixed group in this boardroom. And I really hope that you continue to come and lend your voices and help us find solutions because we need to all have a voice, and you are welcome here. One thing that I do want to ask, that I didn't hear everyone speak, but I feel very strongly that a lot of the leaders in our schools set the climate. And when you hear repeated concerns and complaints, and people are documenting things and sending them to you about leaders in our schools and in our principals, I urge you to listen to those. And I saw that in one of the plans for really looking at, you know, the leadership and principalships. I didn't see any space there for community input or for any kind of feedback from the community. And we made a change this year from one school to another, and I couldn't believe how different it was immediately, that the culture of the school was so much more open and welcoming, and that when my son was struggling, there were people immediately there, both students and teachers, working together to find solutions, to make him feel welcome, to help the transition smooth. And I don't see that everywhere. And I think that there are a lot of really good teachers. We could all name really good teachers that our kids have had, and we can name some ones that have really made things painful. And all it takes is one teacher that puts our kids down that will destroy that love of learning. That's all it takes.[1044.33][1044.33](APPLAUSE) But by the same token, it also can take one really excellent teacher to connect with our kids and to say, hey, I see this spark in you. You're really good at this. And to encourage them. And I really urge you to have more opportunities for teachers to come together, to have forums, to share the best practices, and to say, this is what works really well, and this is what isn't working so well for us. PBIS is done so differently in every school, and it is not supposed to be punitive, but when it is, it really doesn't work, and your data will show you that. And I urge you to look at the data, and I urge you to let people talk about it. We tried to have a conversation at Dawes some years ago, where we wanted an open community forum to talk about exactly this, the number of, you know, African-American male students who were being, not suspended, but getting most of the ODRs, and we were shut down. We were completely shut down. The conversation was not even allowed to happen. And then I started at Walker, and that was like the first thing at the PTA meeting, was that conversation, an open community conversation. So, I urge you to look at the leadership that are willing to take these risks, to have the conversations, because those are the people who really are caring and open, and they want the solutions. And when they are listening to the whole community, they get so many more responses and really good ideas. And I just can't say enough about Eric Friedman at Walker. He's a great principal. Really happy to be there. So, thank you, and thank you all for your service.[1142.58][1142.58](APPLAUSE)
Hi. Hi. Can you all hear me?
No.
No? Can you hear me now? Okay. Hi, my name is Michelle Casey, and I have three children who currently attend Willard Elementary School, and they have been fortunate enough to be a part of the TWE program, which I think is phenomenal. It's a great program, and I have a kindergarten, a second grader, and a fourth grader. My children, most of the teachers think they are from a Spanish-speaking country. I know no Spanish at all, putting them in there, but I felt it would be a great opportunity for them to learn a second language, for free especially. And they've succeeded. They're doing very well. My only concern is, and it has been since my daughter, my fourth grader, was in kindergarten, is that she's the only African-American child in our classroom. I didn't worry about it too much when she was in kindergarten, but as first, when she got to first grade, I realized that, oh, she's going to be with these children until fifth grade, and she probably will always be the only African-American child in her class. So, it kind of, you know, it just settled with me that this is what it was going to be. So, then I had a second, when she was in second grade, I had a kindergartner come in who was afforded the opportunity to be enrolled in TWE as well. So, upon enrollment, well, not enrollment, the first day of school, I noticed once again, he was the only African-American child in his classroom. So, I started to really, and I thought again, well, he's going to be with these children up until fifth grade, being the only African-American in his classroom. And then by first grade, I started to speak out a little bit more about it, just within my circle or the community of Willard. So, then here goes, I have a kindergarten that just came in this year, and once again, she is the only African-American child in her classroom. So, I began to really, just really kind of dig deep into seeing what was the balance throughout, within the other TWE classes in the district. And it is the same exact thing. There's about one in each of the other schools. There's about one child, one African-American child in each classroom. I have spoken with the person in charge of the program here and voiced my concerns about it. I wasn't really satisfied with what I heard. I had offered, I kind of wanted to know what this process was like, how are children being chosen? I know it's a lottery process, but I asked that perhaps maybe the process could be looked into, a little, looked into, to see how we can change it, to make it a little more balanced. Because when I share with my friends about the program and how I feel just really blessed to my children to be a part of it, they often ask, well, how did, you know, how did you get in there? And why aren't there more African-American children in there? And the balance, it's just, and I understand what the intention of the program is and who it really is to, not really the service, but, you know, what it was for, what it's, the Latino community is, you know, what it was initially for, I'm sorry. And so, so I asked if perhaps the process could be looked at a little differently, to maybe get it a little more balanced within the schools throughout the district. And it probably won't help my children at all, but definitely, and I'm just speaking for the families that may come after me, whose children may want to partake or be a part of the program, and just have it looked into a little bit more. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.[1400.86][1400.86](APPLAUSE)
Hi, my name is Antone. Can y'all hear me? I am a former alumni here. I grew up in Evanston. I went and got college and came back to work in the school system. I have custodians in my family. I have, I am a teacher assistant. I have a principal in my family. I also have another teacher in my family. I have four children. I am a low-income mom. I am also my child's nanny and my children's first teacher. I ask for help when my child needed help. They overlook me because they are my coworkers. I ask for help again, they overlook me again. So, I brought them data. They say, we need data for your child to get help. The data was a parent asking for help, because I'm there at night reading the stories out loud. I'm there at night checking the math problems. I am the one cooking the dinner for them. So, I am my child's first parent. I am my child's advocate. I am my child's speaker. If she can't speak, then I'm going to speak for her. And she didn't know how to raise her hand and ask for help, so we found out she had some other issues. I asked my child, I asked the school districts plenty of times to get help. They didn't help me. I had to go outside of the district to find out what is going on with my child. Why am I struggling every night with homework with my child, where I can't pay attention to the rest of them, because I want to make sure that my child is at grade level, that my child is making sure she's not causing problems in the classroom? Because education do come first in our household, after Jesus. So, when y'all tell me, y'all wanted to make sure this gap, when a parent asks for help, come help a parent.[1506.33][1506.33](APPLAUSE)
Good evening. My name is Robin Robinson. Good evening. My name is Robin Robinson. I am a product of Evanston, born and raised. I am the mother of three, the grandmother of seven. All three of my children went through Evanston School Districts. Only one of them graduated high school. I believe the system set the two that didn't graduate up to fail, and those were my boys. My daughter graduated. I didn't graduate because of choices I made, but I eventually got my GED.[1568.01][1568.01](APPLAUSE) I think this is the first meeting I've ever been to like this, and right now, I am sick in the pit of my stomach. Because see, I got seven grandkids and another one on the way, that you all are over their education, and if you give them what you gave my boys, you're setting every single one of them up to fail. I believe in education. I am raising one of those grandchildren. He's seven years old. He came through this program here, and she talked about asking for help. I thought he needed to be tested. I thought he had Attention Deficit Disorder. I was in that classroom all the time, getting phone calls all the time about his behavior. But when I said, what do I need to do? Who do I need to see? Where do I need to take him? They couldn't tell me nothing. They couldn't give me a referral for him to go get tested over there at the Evanston You know where I got it from? His doctor. After he left this program here. Then he was enrolled to go over to Oakdale because of where I live, and because I had been exposed to Oakdale because of my oldest grandson, I know there's a God because he didn't end up there. I put him in the lottery over at King Arts, and God saw fit to place him over there. My grandson was tested, and he does not have Attention Deficit Disorder. He was diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder. That same therapist in the program over at Evanston Hospital, see, they work with me more than you all work with me. Because that therapist made it her business. See, when my schedule changed and I couldn't be off on Wednesdays to take him there anymore, she comes to the school and she sees my grandson. See, I'm here because I'm going to make sure every single one of my grandchildren get what they need. You didn't give my boys what they needed, but my grandchildren are going to get exactly what they need, with or without them. Because, wow. We're the village.
Yes, 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 y'all, yes.
I'm even supporting and backing any and everything that's going to allow us to produce you all. See, I want our children to be able to have titles behind their name.
Yes, you're right.[1760.11][1760.11](APPLAUSE)
District 65 School Board and to the Evanston residents. I'm not from around here. I didn't come to Evanston probably back in the 80s when I attended Northwestern and received my MBA. I've raised two daughters through, in the school system here, of course, in grade school. I didn't come to Evanston probably back in the eighties when I attended Northwestern and I received my MBA. I've raised two, two daughters through, uh, in the, uh, school system here, of course, in grade school and the high school. So I've had some experience here. Now, first of all, I'd like to say, someone else mentioned this, I love everyone, but I really love justice. I really love justice. Now, and some of the things that, that I'm seeing here, some of the numbers I've been looking at, i- it's injustice. Someone mentioned before that education gap has been around a long time. We all know that. But unfortunately, not a lot has been done about the education gap. Okay, there's been a lot of talk about it. People speak about it and they speak passionately. Then by the end of the day, things go on as, as they've been. Looking at some of the numbers, I see that fifty-nine point three percent to sixty-five point three percent of African-American males are le, are reading below the grade level. Okay? So, and you know, that, that's, that's only one number. But the one of the numbers that I'm really, um, bothered about is that in 2015, the ninth grade class of, consisted of 100 students who were, were reading at a level lower than they're required for the successful completion of the ninth grade. 100 students. Now, here's, here's something, uh, by the way, those are mostly African-American males. Okay? Okay, now, now, in the news, we just heard about, maybe, maybe, if you guys haven't heard about Justice Scalia, what he said? He says that, uh, African-Americans should go to, uh, less than the, the top schools because they, they're not equipped to, to do the work. Okay? Well, if you look at that, you can trace that all the way back. Okay? If you don't learn how to read in grade school, you're not gonna be able to read well in high school. And then when you get to college, now, I'm, I'm one of these, uh, guys who say, I wanna go to the, the best school I can go to. Don't go tell me go to a, a second level school. So, and a lot of my brothers feel, and sisters feel the same way. So, but when you're, when in, the ninth grade class in 2015, the ninth grade class consisted of 100 students who are reading at a level lower than required for the successful completion of the ninth grade. That, that's significant. So those 100 people, unless the high school, uh, does a, a, amazing job of fix it, then they're, they're doomed. And they're, either not gonna finish high school, or they're not, they're not gonna, well, certainly won't go to college. And then it gets worse. Okay? Currently, thus far, there are 116 incoming freshmen, freshmen, current eighth graders, reading below the 40th percentile. These are not special education students and they are primarily students of color. So, so we got the problem. So I think, you know, I think we got a justice problem. This is an in, injustice, an injustice that we really need to take, take care of. Now, the question is, we know all about the achievement gap, but what are you gonna do? What are some concrete plans? Some concrete plans, well, we know, many in this room know that the high school is doing some things. They got some plans for dealing with the achievement gap. What are you doing? Okay? What is your plan for reducing the achievement gap? Concrete, what is it? Okay? And, and recognize that, uh, people in here talk about, uh, you know, working with their kids and that, that's all really well. But you know what? We're not, it's not about, just about meritocracy. Pull yourself up by your bootstraps. I mean, we could, we all care about our kids, but you have a responsibility as well. You have a responsibility as well. So you should be feeling really bad about that 100 students are reading below grade level. That should be something that, that's on your mind. So anyway, I think it's a really a justice issue. It's a justice issue. And to me, the achievement gap continues, continuation of the achievement gap in Evanston, Illinois is a justice issue. Thank you.
Our board policy limits public commentary to an hour and we've gone over by, um, a while, so we'll take... Anyone else, are you walking out? Okay, well, it sounds like we can conclude our board of commentary now. So I'll hand it over to you, Paul. Oh, one more? Okay.
Good evening to members of the school board and to the community. I am grateful for the opportunity to be able to sit and listen to all of these concerns. I am relatively new to the community. Um, I moved here officially August 23rd, just a day before, um, school started. And I am at 1411 Davis, have three children, all of them are, um, in school, uh, school aged, uh, first grade and sixth grade and the 12th grade. And I am listening, uh, very attentively to everything that is being spoken. Uh, I, I think that it is probably important for you to also know, uh, I think most of you probably don't, that I'm also the new minister at Second Baptist Church. And, um, and I just think it's important for me to stand here and to share a few words. And I wasn't going to say anything, but, um, I thought that it was important for me to talk a little bit, um, about, uh, where I come from. Um, I spent 16 years as a pastor in the city of Detroit and was very involved in the city of Detroit and was very involved in the public school system there and, uh, fight for justice. I'm listening to the statistics and, uh, if anybody, um, knows about statistics in the city of Detroit, you know that they are relatively abysmal. Uh, high school graduation rate for the last 10 years has been less than 40%, so which is just, uh, just really, really significant. So there are lots of more statistics. But one of the things that I found out, and I think I heard from the young lady that was speaking about, about systems, that there's something systemic that is occurring here. And I think it's very important, this is my vantage point, it's very important for you all to know, who are sitting at the roundtable here, that from my vantage point, everything that is being said is not so much a reflection on you and what you're doing and what your job is, but it is a reflection on a system that has been in existence for a number of years. And it is a system that is discriminatory in nature. And it's not just Evanston. It's not just Illinois. It is throughout our United States of America. The system of injustice, the system of discrimination continues to perpetuate a myth that people of color are not able to achieve. That they're not able to, uh, perform academically at the same rate as other people. It's important for you to know that you're simply a part of that system. And what we're doing as a community is we're coming together and we're saying, I hope I can say this, we're not tired of you. I know that I'm not tired of you. First of all, I don't, I don't know most of you. I know some of you. I have two wonderful church members. I hope you don't mind me calling you out who are sitting right around the table. So I know that we're not talking about individuals. This is not an individual problem. If we look at it as an individual problem, it will never be solved. But if we look at it as a structural problem, it means that we can come together to begin to work to bridge this heinous divide that continues to exist. Bridging the divide means that we have to do this. We're not just a community over here. Whether we like it or not, we are a community. This is everybody together. There is no way that we would, there is no way that we will be able to begin to remedy these problems that are so significant with our children unless we come together. So we all have our responsibility. The board has its responsibility, the community has its responsibility. And as a pastor, a new pastor in the community, I wanna say that the church and houses of worship also have their responsibility. Everybody is in this together. And so, if we're in this together, then what we have to do before we leave this place is we have to make some sort of verbal commitment that we will do whatever it takes in order to bridge this divide. That means for me, as a pastor of a church that has unlimited resources, that has an unbelievably amazing congregation that is really settled in the city, we will avail ourselves to do whatever we can to assist whoever is in charge of bridging this divide. And as my friend Roger just said, it begins with reading. We have got to teach our children to read from very early on. I think that you all are in struggle. I think that you all are in struggle because by the time our children get to you, there are already deficiencies. There are already problems. If children going into kindergarten are not reading at the kindergarten level, there's going to be an extreme problem. We have to teach them how to read from pre, from pre-K, all the way, from two or three years old, all the way up until they're five years old and ready for kindergarten. We have a responsibility to do that and everybody does. There should be no child left unturned. I couldn't find my way in Detroit because it was so large. I've only been in Evanston for three or four months and I know every street of this city. I know how to get around this place. And if we know how, if we know our city that way, if we know our neighborhoods that way, then let's do something to bring everybody to the table. Because this is not just the district's problem, it is a community problem. It's all of our problems. Therefore, let's get together and solve it together. That's, I wanna thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Hi, um, I'm Snowmia Aiden. I'm a product of District 65. And I cannot say that my experience at District 65 is horrible. Um, but growing up in Evanston, a lot of people kind of bring to the table the word diversity and how people in Evanston are so close and how Evanston has this amazing magical thing, how everybody's so close and how racism almost, we don't acknowledge it because sometimes it doesn't necessarily affect us. But as I got over, older, I started to realize the small things in the classroom that really make a difference. And the classes that I wanted to excel in and did excel in were all classes that I had relationships with my teachers in. I think that a relationship with a teacher is probably the most important thing when it comes to your education because that teacher makes you want to go above and beyond. That teacher makes you wanna come after school to help, to get help, regardless of if that teacher looks like you or if it doesn't. Great teachers push students to succeed and they... They know how to address students and the specific situation and they understand that not every student is the same. So as I got older and I started moving to higher level classes, people like me started kind of slimming down. Soon, I'm just kind of just like the only one in my classes. And, um, when you're the only one and when you're the token black student in these higher level classes, you notice how teachers start to address you and how teachers talk to you. And that type of stuff brings out a frustration that doesn't make you want to succeed in that class. It doesn't make you want to go after school and ask that teacher a question. It makes you wanna quit. So I think what would help the achievement gap would be to stop ignoring the problems of race in Evanston because we're in such a bubble that I think we talk about how diverse Evanston is and how great of a town we are and everybody's kind of like holding hands. We have this mentality about how, wow, we're so fortunate. But what happens when we leave Evanston and when we get this huge culture shock? I don't wanna, hopefully, I don't wanna stay in Evanston for the rest of my life. So when I go to college, how will these problems about race affect me? And how will my education be affected? So I think the achievement gap is more than just a subject to be talked about on a panel. It's more, I mean, it has to do a lot with my future and my sister's future and my friend's future. So it's more of, um, something that needs to be discussed in the classroom and not just on a panel.
I think that concludes our public commentary and now, turn the mic over to Paul.
Let me start with a couple of comments, if I may. And I wanna, um, echo what Reverend Neighbors said. I am so grateful, I've lived in this community for 18 years. And I, uh, uh, most recently, about 18 months ago, volunteered for service to help to lead the school system as a community member and as an educator and as somebody who cares deeply about all children in the community. So I'm grateful. I'm extremely grateful for all of you who've come out tonight and spent time expressing your deep concerns, your cries for help. I hear that. I hear the response, the points that, uh, Mr. Johnson started with, that it's time not only for planning, but for action. The push that you've expressed tonight about understanding the data and not just dwelling on the data, but, but facing the data. There's been a wonderful statement of the pronoun "we", that we work in this community, we are the community and we serve the community. There's been fantastic commentary on learning and learning styles and on how, um, all children can and should and must learn and that we, as a system, we as a, as a group of educators need to respond to that. And there's been explicit and important conversation and, um, about race and about racism and about addressing those concerns in a very explicit way. So I too am extremely grateful for the participation of everyone who's been here tonight and those who aren't. Those who have the deep concerns that you're representing, uh, but aren't here tonight for the wide range of reasons, uh, but, but would echo what you say. And I wanna just respond partially to Reverend Neighbors. I'm committed. I'm committed to work as a community member, as a leader of an institution, to do what I can in the seat that I'm sitting to make a difference in the lives of you as family members and of, uh, of your children as we move forward. Let me take a few moments to talk about some of the things that we have been doing. But I wanna recognize that all of what I'm gonna say are necessary steps, but they're not sufficient. The, the sufficiency, the, the getting to where we have to get to comes from the work that we will do together as a community, along with much of the work that we're, we're already doing. In the, um, in the 18 months that I've been here, I've been working very hard and indeed, you've been encouraging us, us tonight to think about a culture change in the district. Um, and to, in many ways, from where I sit, to leverage the commitment and the expertise of those in the community and those who are in the community of educators that serve the, the schools. And so that's a, a key piece. We've created a, a strategic plan as a guidepost. And I actually think, and I'm challenged and I, I hear you well, that it's time to elevate the component parts in the strategic plan that are addressing some of the issues that you're bringing forward, that are brought forward today. Um, and it's time for further engagement and to harvest more issues that have to come out. We're doing a few things. We're focused on kindergarten through, through grade three literacy frameworks so that we can actually address the question of reading. We're focused on high-needs students. We've been looking at, uh, programs and programming for children who are, um, right now under the 25th percentile, children who are English language learners, children who are students with disabilities and yet are very active learners. We're working on interventions and the, um, gentleman who just returned back from, uh, to Evanston, who talked about the Response to Intervention, RTI. This is a multi-tiered approach to addressing the issues and the concerns that all children bring, uh, to, to the issues. And for me, it's about bringing our special educators and our general educators, all of our educators together, to be committed to the education of kids and to be able to address the concerns that they have. Uh, we are, we are collaborating with ETHS. And again, several of you as colleagues have put, uh, put forth, uh, the concerns about the hundred children who, uh, last year landed at ETHS, um, at a proficiency level that would not set them up for success and the focus that we have on the children who are in the 40th percentile and below. And I think that's something that we are committed to look at and to really dig deep into who the children are, um, what their circumstances are, and then what we can do as a system to be responsible. And then also what ETHS can do as a system, uh, to be responsible. And we work, uh, hand in glove with them. Many of you have mentioned the diversity of staff. And indeed, I've engaged and, uh, and moved forward on, uh, with our, uh, human resources department, uh, a way to identify, recruit and retain staff that reflected the diversity of our school system and to increase the numbers of, of colleagues at the multiple staff levels, whether it's in the principal's office, whether it's in the counselor's office... it's in the principal's office, whether it's in the counselor's office, whether it's in the classroom of people of color who are African American, who are Hispanic and who represent the broad, the broad diversity of our system. We're working on culturally relevant pedagogy. We're doing that at, as, again, one of you mentioned, at SHOOT, Lincolnwood and Willard with a real focus on harvesting what we learn in those schools so that our educators across the system can teach where they can connect to the broad set of cultures that are represented in our community. And we're at a planning stage on the next stage for the African-centered curriculum, which is an example of culturally relevant pedagogy. We've been spending a lot of time this year on social and emotional learning. We've engaged through very specific programs like Second Step, which provides opportunities for problem solving. It provides opportunities for young people to express their feelings and their concerns and to push our adults who work with our kids to listen and to listen clearly to what the children are saying. We're doing work in what is called sharing circles and peace circles as well as a way of engaging children around the issues and concerns that they have. Again, one of you as colleagues mentioned community schools. We have a deep commitment to community schools. We're working on this at SHOOT. We just had a meeting today with our colleagues from YOU who are coordinating the, the effort at SHOOT. And we're wanting to know even more how that example of engaging parents and community members and to provide the type of wraparound services that are necessary for the supports of our kids can be done and if possible to be replicated. On suspensions, and again, one of you mentioned the data around the suspensions, I think at the high school level. Indeed, we have shifted our suspension policy. We've been proactive on this. No suspension over five days can happen without it crossing my desk. And indeed, as I look at those, we have to actually look at creating the conditions for success in a school, let alone the suspensions. And that's really important. We also are offering a program called Alternatives to Suspension. We've been offering it over time, but we're making that a required part so that if parents so elect, rather than suspending a young person out of school where they're not with their teachers, where they're not with their colleagues, we offer alternatives so that children can be in schools. We've established school climate teams and we're phasing this in, in six schools this year. And indeed, some of the commentary is a push for me to work with staff to say, maybe we need to move faster. That the six teams right now, we're working on issues around diversity, around race and racism, around relationships, around safety, around focused teaching and learning and around what the environment in the school really provides for children and what it does to potentially push them away. So these school climate teams are groups of educators who are working very, with data to be able to make some, some important and intentional ways of paying attention to diversity of children in our schools and how we're, how we're making a difference. We've established the Whole Child Council, which is both an internal and external council. The internal side is made up of educators throughout the system and then we have a group of external advisors. And this group is actually focused on the conditions by which our families are living in Evanston. Some of, some of this is within our warrant where we can help in any which way to help improve reading, to help improve the social supports for kids. Some of this is slightly outside of our warrant, but within the warrant, all of us who are public servants in the city of Evanston. So whether it's housing, whether it's job creation, et cetera, these are the sorts of things that we are, we are engaged in. We're working very hard with partners in our city, local service providers to help on issues around reading, help with issues around extended learning through the summer. Summer learning loss is one of the, the deep concerns. And if you remain at the meeting as we go through the evening tonight, we'll be talking about some of our summer programs, which is a, a deep commitment of mine and ours. And we really see this as an important part of moving ultimately towards year-round education in some way or form, but to be able to address those children who have the highest needs. We are an active participant and leader in the Create Alter Career Initiative, which is bringing together a wide range of community partners in the spirit of saying, we can't do this work alone. We're responsible. We're responsible for what goes on during the school day. We're responsible to serve your children and to serve my children well. But indeed, we can't do this alone. And we're very pleased to be working with the wide range of institutions, the city, the social service agencies, the community partners, the 501(c)(3)'s, the nonprofits that actually serve. We are working closely with Northwestern from data and analytics. So there was a push to, to have us come back and have a full board meeting on, on the data and the information to issues right now around STEM, around science, technology, engineering and math and the access that young people, young people of color have to our STEM programming or to STEM programming in the future. We have a wide range of staff inside the system who are, have the responsibility to do work on community engagement. And we brought them together the other day. 20 people in a room who are, are our own staff members and we brought them together to collaborate, to create a coalition, a coordinated coalition. So the left arm and the right arm actually know what each other are doing, whether it's at the Early Childhood Family Center or throughout the rest of our system. And we've also set up this year, and again, one of you as a colleague have pushed really hard on, on the work that our principals do to embrace everything that you say. We have outcome goals for every principal and the outcome goals, and we have outcome goals for me. And those outcome goals are around student performance and they're around the achievement gap. The, all of this is necessary, as I said, but it's not sufficient. And it's not sufficient because we need to continue to work, we need to continue to embrace your voices, encourage your voices to be here at these meetings and to be working with my staff and me. And so again, let me start where I, let me end where I started, that I'm, I'm committed and I'm committed to work directly with you as colleagues. I'm committed to take a step forward and many steps forward as a community. And again, thank you Reverend Neighbors and thank you all of you for putting that issue on the table. I think systemically, we have to pay attention to every voice in this room, every voice that isn't here tonight but wishes they were here tonight. And that we can, as Evanstonians, as people who live in Skokie, as people who care deeply about all children and especially those children who are struggling, that we can make a difference. So that's where we're at right now and we will continue to move forward. I'll look forward to connecting with many, if not most, of you as we move forward on this most important work.
Thank you. Any other board members?
I'd like to say something.
Yes.
I wanted to echo the thank you for all of you being here. Candace, you know, I also want you to know how deeply and strongly we care about these issues. This does keep, it keeps me up at night. I'm sure it keeps most everyone in this room up at night. This is not the first time we've seen data. As we've talked about, this is, it's an ongoing topic and we have a plan. You can diminish a plan. We have a plan that has a mix of things in it that I, over 2,000 folks in our community were involved in pulling together. So that's one place to start. If that mix of things is not, are not the right things to help your children, to help our children, then we need to, we need to talk about that. And we need to work out and see what needs to be changed. If it is the right mix of things and we're not doing it quick enough, fast enough, the right way, we need to accelerate and work on that together. And I really think that starts with relationships. It has to start to the person who said, we can't relate to you. I don't believe that. If we are really to figure out what the systemic issues are here and the structural issues, and I believe there are some, we've got to, we've got to be in relationship with one another. And we've got to talk through that and, and understand what we don't understand. So I would just open a personal dialogue with anyone in this room. I care about Denise back there who's in third, fourth grade. I care about Amani. I care about Amari. I care about all of these kids and, and the reason I came to the school board, this role, is because of these kids and our kids. And so please, please let this be the beginning of something, something that happens over time and that we work together. It is not going to change overnight and I think that's the scariest part for all of us, for, for me personally. I do think we have a, a group of, as I said, our priorities that are best practice, that have worked in other places. We need to do it right. I worry that we can't be paralyzed because we're afraid of this, because it's so big. And we also can't go off looking for some magic bullet that doesn't exist because it's just really hard work. And so, so I guess that's, that's the other charge is we've got to be committed to be in this for the long haul because while it's taking way too long already, at least it's going to take three to five years for us to get really substantive positive change that we can keep going and keep moving forward with. So, so let's be together with it for the long haul. And thank you again for being here.
Thank you, Candace. Jennifer?
So can we put on something about exploring another meeting?
We can.
Yeah.
But not now. Let's wait to look into new business.
So I, I just would love to say, echo the thank you for being here and thank Paul for the list of concrete action steps that the district is working on together. But also to hearken some words that Brian Stevenson, who some of you may have heard last year at the high school, he runs the, the Equal Justice Initiative in Montgomery, Alabama, about how we can get through making those action steps a reality. And it's about getting close to the problems, getting closer to these issues to preserve our sense of hopefulness in the face of injustice, to figure out how to choose to be doing things that we know are uncomfortable, right? It's what Candace just said, it's, it's making progress on all of those things. And it's really about changing the narrative. And many of you guys tonight talked about how we have to change the narrative about how children learn and what the best conditions are for kids learning and maybe turn some things upside down. So I, I just wanted to kind of throw those things out as another part of the recipe for making change that we all care so much about.
So I would, I'll start with a resurgence. That's, I would say what I felt. I felt it was energy. And so this is the most people I've ever seen at a board meeting, black, white or others, so that, that speaks to something. I really want to sort of thank the people that came to the podium and say that, you know, that's bravery to me to stand up there and tell a story that you might not want to share with anyone else, but the fact that you were willing to come up here and share it. And the truth is, I appreciate it because it educates me. And I don't hear every story. And so the fact that you're willing to share that, I, I do appreciate it. And I, you know, my goal is I hope we can make a difference, save the seven grandkids, eight grandkids that are coming and that we really can make an impact and not just on you but on the community. And then I, I'm going to close with, I just want to say something to the organizers. So I want to say thank you for organizing this, but I actually want to challenge you to keep the resurgence going or the awakening or whatever you want to call this. And that, you know, I would say some older people in the community, they come to me and they say things like, there's a gap and that they're still doing things because younger people won't step up. And so I want to challenge the organizers that, you know, you need to keep this going. And I think it's, it's interesting that people stood up and said they've never been to a meeting. And I'm not going to ask people to come to every meeting because that would be crazy. But I think the organizers should find a way to have representation at every meeting. And that if, you know, everyone knows this is important and the way you show it's important by showing up at the meeting and saying it's important. And I believe if you keep saying it, you know, there is other work that goes on behind it, but if you keep saying it, people will hear it and it will make a difference.
Just want to conclude by thanking everyone again for coming tonight. We'll take a quick break and then come back to business.
As we, as we reconvene, and I'm grateful for everybody who's here, I do want to have two more announcements. And the first one is actually pertinent to the last discussion that we just had. On January 28th, which is a Thursday night, we'll be partnering with our colleagues at ETHS for the Second Annual State of the Schools Address. And it will be from 7:00 to 8:30 in the ETHS auditorium. Again, that's January 28th at 7 o'clock in the ETHS auditorium. And Superintendent Witherspoon, Eric and I will be presenting the State of the Schools and we'll take into context much of what we discussed tonight and as we think about the performance of all of our children and how we engage around serving all of, all of the members of all of our communities. I think it will be a nice opportunity and an important opportunity to put voice across both, both school systems. More information will be available on our website. I'm sure it will be on the 202 website, but I want to invite community members to participate and to join us on January 28th at 7:00 PM. And then just my final announcement is to wish everybody a very safe and restful winter break. We look forward to welcoming our students back to school on January 4th, 2016, after a much deserved break for our kids and our families and just a, here's to a festive holiday season for all, all, for all.
Oh, thank you. Candace, we have our action items.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation outlined in the attached group, to motion, group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, retirements and separations, dismissal of a part-time childcare group leader and a custodian. November 2015 Board of Education and Finance Committee meeting minutes, destruction of the October 2013 closed session audio recording. September 2015 School Treasurers Report and Budget Amendment, Amendments. October 2015 List of Bills, the Roofing and Masonry Bid, Budget Calendar for Fiscal Year 17 and Gift Acceptance for Kingsley and Dewey.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Chow?
Oh, wait. Can we talk about anything or do we just have to?
Oh, we can pull, we can redo it and pull one.
You can pull something.
The gift acceptance? Because I just wanted to ask a question about it.
Well, maybe we can ask the question and then do the group.
Yeah.
Okay. The question is, just, I was just wondering if what's going on with the literacy gift for Dewey? If we knew specifically how they're going to use it?
So I, I know a little specifics that what this wonderful grant is, is to offer sort of a, an addendum or more literature and more, more books that we can actually use to actually carry out our literacy program. And the reason I'm stumbling a little bit is that I think I have sitting in my email a list of some of those books, but I wasn't able to get to them, to that email this afternoon. But I can make it available.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Roll call please.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Quattron?
Yes, the motion passes 5 to 0. Adoption of the 2015 Tax Levy. Claudia?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution and certifications for a 2015 tax levy totaling $90,509 and, wait, no, 90 million, 90 million, sorry. I couldn't quite get it out.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Quattron?
Yes, the motion passes 5 to 0. Approval of the student fees for fiscal year 17. Suni?
I move that the Board of Education approve the student fees for the 2017 fiscal year.
We'll have a second and then have a discussion.
A second?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I did have a question.
Yes.
Which is, Dr. Brown, we were talking about the fact that these will, to a certain extent, offset technology fees, the increase. And I wondered if you had any idea to what extent it would offset.
Well, the, the fee increase that is before the board is estimated to raise about approximately $50,000 for the 16, 17 school year. And we are planning to move $50,000 And we are planning to move $50,000 of technology expenses currently paid for from our debt service into the operating budget. And so that increase in technology fee will offset the expenditure that we're moving into the operating budget. The total fees of the current fee plus the proposed fee would cover about 5.4% of instructional technology expenses. So it's a small amount, but it is a user fee that we're asking students to pay who would benefit from technology offered in and through the classrooms. The district is still picking up the majority of the instructional technology expense, however.
Thank you. Other questions? Intend? Okay, roll call please.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Quattron?
Yes, the motion passes 5 to 0. Approval of the Full Day School Improvement Waiver to ISBE.
I move that the Board of Education approve the submission of the Full Day School Improvement Waiver to the State Board of Education.
Second? So can I?
Yeah, we're going to, we second and then we discuss.
Second? Great. So I just want to clarify that in the memo that was put together, it says that you're suggesting no significant changes be made for the days designated for professional learning until 2017-18. But in fact, we are, it does have, I don't know if you'd call it significant or not, but there is a change, right, this year?
There would be a change for the 1617 school year, yes. So I think, wait, I-
Of a .5 day.
Of a .5, correct. So instead of 3.5, we would have four days.
I thought that this was a proposal that we could take that if we wanted to, but if, when you all propose, when we talk about professional development, it would be discussed at that point.
Provides the option to do that.
Yeah. And I just wanted to clarify that the memo said that there were no changes, whether it's significant or not, it's-
Right, so there, so just to clarify, there is, there would be, if you vote this in, this would give us the option to expand by a half day the professional learning that we have, period. The second piece is that the significant changes, which I think is what we were referencing, is about how do we really think about professional learning? What's the best practice that we should be practicing? How do we move forward as a district? How do we pay very close attention to the needs of community members? And how do we balance all that off so that we remain a learning organization, which is what we are, and we do it in a way that's really pushing the multiple agendas that we're wanting to push, including the agendas that we talked about tonight?
I just wanted on public record to make sure that voting yes for this doesn't mean that I'm voting or approving whether or not next year we have four days or 3.5 days.
That's my understanding.
We're creating an option.
If that's the joint understanding, that's all I was, that's what I wanted to ask.
Okay. Roll call please.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Quattron?
Yes, the motion passes 6 to 0. Our first discussion item is summer learning. And we have a panel here with Foundation 65, Lisa Gino and Linda Schusterman, and YMCA, Kalina Salka, sorry, mispronouncing, and then YU Seth Green, and Jamila and John for District 65.
So as we set ourselves up, and then I'll turn it over, I believe to Dr. Pitts, as we think about summer engagement and the activities that we have, and again, the context of the last conversation is actually really important, one of the deep concerns we have for student performance is around summer learning loss. And how do we create the environment, both during the school year and then during the summer months, that can be supportive of our students? And that summer learning loss is, if I may, let me expand it to both include academic growth, the concerns that we have, and social and emotional growth. And I think those are, again, those are two of the major components of our strategic plan. Those are two of our commitments as we're moving forward on the wide range of issues around student growth and student achievement. And what we stress is the combination of both, that the academic and social and emotional growth of our students is actually really key for success, success in our system, success as they move into high school. And with that, the community partners that we have that are focusing on literacy and reading, focusing on some academic skill building, focusing on social and emotional learning and skill building is actually really important. So I just wanted to preface that and then turn it over to Dr. Pitts, to Jamila, to lead the conversation.
Good evening. I was going to say good afternoon, this evening. We have really what is going to be a joint report because our summer learning project encompasses all of our community partners. So what we're going to do is have each of our community partners present their aspect of the summer learning program in turn, and then I will share what happens with District 65. We're going to go in alphabetical order. Mr. Green is going to bring something to Adila because he has a presentation. So why don't we first have Foundation 65, Lisa Gino, and Linda Schusterman will join us here, followed by YMCA with Nicole Woodward-Iliad and Kalina Eschela, and then the YU team, Seth Green, and Megan Orling.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Gino. I'm the Executive Director of Foundation 65. And here with me tonight is Linda Schusterman. And we are here to talk a little bit about our summer reading program. And I'm going to start by telling you just a little bit of background about the program. Our program is for rising second graders. And the summer reading program was initially created and developed by Linda Schusterman, who for many years served as the Reading Recovery Teacher Leader at District 65. Linda noticed something very significant as she worked with students. She witnessed summer reading loss. Students that she worked with intensively over the school year and provided supplementary reading support to were losing the progress that they made over the summer. So based on needs that she saw, real needs that she saw with District 65 students, and also based on research and best practices within literacy and education, she created this program. The goal of the program is to support emergent readers, maintain the reading growth that they have made during the school year. The students who take part in this program are students who were identified by the Reading Recovery Teachers or the support teachers that worked with them during the school year. And with Foundation 65's support, the program has expanded over the years. Now, all students who receive supplemental reading support during the school year participate in this program. So that's reading recovery, it's reading recovery in Spanish, which is DLL. I won't embarrass myself by trying to say the Spanish. Guided reading plus and literacy lessons. I'm going to let Linda speak a little bit about how the program works and what the impact has been over the years. But Foundation 65's support has really taken this from what was just at a few schools and really expanded it thoughtfully and intentionally over the course of many years. We've been able to successfully include Spanish-speaking students and students that are at non-Titel 1 schools, and it's a program that we're all very committed to and proud to be part of. So I'll turn it over to Linda.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about how it works. Teachers come together and they select 12 fiction and 12 informational texts for each student. And the part of the success of the program is that the books are selected by the child's interests and their reading level so they can read the text successfully. So through June and August, they receive six packages in the mail, and in each package are four books. And there's also a personal letter from the teacher, and there's also paper and a self-addressed stamped envelope back to the teacher so they can write back and forth to each other throughout the summer. And some people ask why so many books? Research shows that there's a positive correlation between the volume of reading and reading proficiency. And remember, these are beginning readers, so some of the books only have like 100 words. So it takes quite a few books to build that proficiency. And the writing is important in terms of composition, but it's also important because reading and writing is a reciprocal process, and it's especially important for beginning readers because they're learning as much through the writing. They learn about reading through the writing. So, and one other great thing that the foundation has been able to give to the students is a subscription to Ranger Rick magazine that they get all through the second grade year to keep them motivated to read. So students are assessed in spring, and then they're given the same assessment when they come back to school in the fall. And we try to assess the students within the first three weeks of school, so we're truly judging whether growth is from the summer reading project or, so it's not affected by instruction. And so this past summer, and the board has a packet with the results are broken down by each of the groups, each of the subgroups, but in total, 85% of the students maintained the reading level that they had in the spring. And that is the goal, is to maintain the level. And 48% of that group actually increased their reading scores by one or more levels. And just from, we asked the parents to comment on the program, and there's so many wonderful comments from parents about how well the program works and how they enjoy reading with their students, with their children, excuse me. And one thing we've noticed is that the children, after the summer's over, they're allowed to keep their books. We see them a lot of the book nooks, or the PTAs run these book, you know, stalls, and the children start bringing those books back and they trade them in and they get new books. So it keeps growing and growing that they keep able to get books. And one thing that this past summer, we also noticed that teachers were picking more of these how-to books, like how to make cupcakes or how to make slime, really exciting. And parents really commented that they felt that they became really engaged with the reading because now they were working to make something together. So we thought that was a real positive this year. And I just want to say that all this is possible because of Foundation 65. And I want to give them a big thank you. They, it's not only financial support, but it's the time, the energy, and the commitment that they all devote to supporting the teachers and children in District 65. Thank you so much. And if there's any questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just, this is a quick question. I, one of the things I think about, I have a, my middle son is in reading fluency, we, like despite having lots of, you know, trying to do the reading, there's definitely this summer loss. I'm curious on the scale side, is there any thought about trying to do like a summer reading light where you could get maybe some guidance to parents of what could be done but, you know, reach a broader swath of kids?
I'll start and you can fill in. Well, the core of this program is really complement something that happens during the school year. So we're really building on the relationship between the student and that teacher that works with them, and also the family relationship that that teacher's been able to build with that family. So it's hard to reproduce a light version for students that haven't been through that process and don't have that personalized relationship. That said, we have talked about, you know, developing things like book lists. I mean, one of the biggest challenges for some of these students is finding books that are at the appropriate level and that really match student interest. One thing that I have learned working with Linda, if you read some of the literature about summer reading and the way other folks do it, they talk a lot about self-selection of books, how it's really important for students to go out and pick the books that they want because if they're interested in it, then they'll actually read those books. Well, our program targets a younger crowd. These are rising second graders, and they don't have the ability to select. So the reason our program works well is because we're taking that piece out. A first grader, as I'm learning now with my own kindergartner, they want to read chapter books. They pick the most thickest, complicated book on the shelf, and they're like, this is what I want to read. And there's just no possible way. But the Reading Recovery Teachers and the Guided Reading Plus Teachers, they're selecting at the appropriate level. So I guess it's a roundabout way of saying, it's hard to tailor that. But with older students, I think there are opportunities for, I don't know, having a book fair where we have chances for kids to come in and do that self-selection if they're the right age and at the right level. So.
Thank you. No, that's, I think it's a question for us because it's, there's a lot of variability from one teacher to another and school to another at the end of the summer about reading lists and sort of how you could reach even more children in the summertime that could be at risk of, you know, losing reading skills. Anyway, thank you.
Other questions?
I'm from the McGaw YMCA, and I'm speaking on behalf of our Y Readers Program, and our Executive Director Nicole Woodward-Iliad is with me today as well. I'm here to talk just a little bit about the Y Readers Summer Learning Loss Prevention Program, which I think a lot of folks are familiar with now as we're in our fourth year. Our pilot wrapped up and we're actually post-pilot this year. It gave us an opportunity, and I want to say thank you to all of you. We were able to learn a lot from our last experience at a board meeting, and we took the opportunity to then expand the demographic of children we were serving in the program. We've traditionally served strategic readers in the 30th to 50th percentile performing below grade level. And this past summer, we were able to expand and we included students who are in the 0 to 30th, more intensive readers as well. So those are conversations that we've been able to have, and I believe that we had a really successful summer. We, I have distributed, I'm not sure if they're in your board packets, some of the preliminary data that we have from YUSA and from the program. And we're still diving deeper into the data to learn more specifically about the individual students that we've served. The program that we use is assessed through what is called the STAR reading assessment. So we do do pre and post tests, and traditionally we've spoken in months gained. And on the charts that are passed around currently, we can see that we had a successful summer with an average of 3.4 months gained in reading throughout the course of the program. Just to recap, this past summer, the program runs for six weeks, four days a week. It's a full-day program for children entering first through third grade, so our rising first through third graders. We heard the need from the district, as I said, and we serve both strategic and intensive readers. That includes children from the 0 all the way up to the 50th percentile. We knew that this could impact student growth, and we really wanted to focus on moderate gains this summer. Some interventions that we tried to help build the success is, one example is we piloted a reading specialist position at Washington Elementary School, and she was successfully provided small group support using Level Literacy Intervention, or LLI. The program is, of course, no cost to students and families, and the children are invited during the February parent-teacher conferences. It's less of a, hey, you're going to summer school, and a more of a- It's less of a, hey, you're going to summer school and a more of a, come and join us. We're excited to have you and you're welcome and we want you to be a part of our Y Readers family. The program serves students from Oakden, Dawes and Washington. Of course, Oakden was getting a new roof, so we were all under one roof at Dawes for the summer, which was a very fun adventure. We also serve students at the Foster Reading Center and we were able to expand that program. We had two classrooms there and it was served 32 students. We have 16 children in each room. After looking back through the students served, we were able to serve students from King Arts, Kingsley, Dewey, Lincolnwood, Orington, Bessie Rhodes, Willard and Walker, all at the Foster Reading Center location. 187 students below grade level completed the program and their data is what you have tonight. And the program did provide 2.5 hours of intensive literacy instruction each morning, which did continue to follow the four blocks literacy model. And we integrated, of course, through that guided reading, self-selected reading, writing and phonics. The weekly enrichment activities aligned directly with the morning instruction and we actually used District 65 teachers to help us develop that afternoon enrichment curriculum to keep the thematic learning concise throughout the course of the day and the weeks. We of course also invited kids to participate in swim lessons. There were a variety of theme-related field trips and character development pieces, nutrition, education, physical activity and things of that nature. One of our greatest successes this summer was the growth of our Reading Buddies Program. We had 75 volunteers from across the community join us, some of whom are teachers and educators who maybe weren't able to teach in the program, retired staff from the district who all came out and read with students every week. I have a letter from one of our reading buddies who said it was the absolute highlight of her summer and she can't wait to come back and spend time with kids next year. Children received complimentary three-month memberships for themselves and their families. And one of my favorite parts about the program is the community and family engagement piece. Over 90% of our families participated in at least one or two of our family nights. We offered four. The initial was a welcome for our families, an orientation to the program where we shared expectations of parent participation. The second was in the first week of program where make and take literacy activities that empowered parents to successfully complete homework assignments and different reading activities throughout the course of the program at home. Were really well, well received and it, it was a very memorable experience for everyone and I think it really impacted the quality of engagement through the course of the summer. Really set the tone for the program. Later in the summer, we took parents and children from all of our programs to a Schaumburg Boomers baseball game, so six buses full of family members. It was, it was a fantastic time. And then of course, our end of summer, which highlighted all of the opportunities and learning and growth that happened throughout the course of the summer and just celebrated the program overall, which was our highest attended event. In addition to the partnership with the district, we also have a strong partnership with the city of Evanston, who helped us serve over 26,000 healthy snacks and meals to kids participating in the Y Readers Program through the USDA Summer Food Service Program. It's very impactful. Not only did we align obviously with the USDA standards for health and nutrition, but we also aligned with our YMCA of the USA Healthy Eating and Physical Activity Standards. It's a very successful program and a lot of parents share how much they appreciated the healthy meals, first thing in the morning, getting kids started and ready for their day. And that continued throughout the course of the summer. So a few data pieces as we talked about. If you look at the, we have a loving literacy infographic that went out and that highlights some of the summer learning loss nationally, but more importantly, in the lower left-hand corner, it talks about boosting reading skills and the impact that we had in our program directly with the growth. And then of course, we have our Learn to Read, Read to Learn page that looks like this. It takes us through the different charts. It shows the data from the different schools and site by grade level. It also, on the backside, talks about the growth of the program over the course of the last four years. And last year, of course, the program did double in size. It allowed us to employ over 30 district teachers and teachers assistants for the morning piece. Our site coordinators and directors are all District 65 educators. And then we also brought in young enrichment staff, actually two of whom will be student teaching in the district this fall. The final piece includes the caregiver survey responses. And as you can see, the feelings that the parents continue to have about the program as indicated through their surveys and then various testimonials continue to remain high. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go away.
Claudia.
Um, on the Foster Reading Center, you went through very fast the schools that were covered there. Could you just go that, through that a little more slowly?
Yes, absolutely. We serve students at the Foster Reading Center. It was 32 children from King Arts, Kingsley, Dewey, Lincolnwood, Orington, Bessie Rhodes, Willard and Walker.
Almost everybody else, right?
Yeah. They were referred by different teachers in the district in those schools specifically who are aware of the program. We also spent time with social workers from those schools who may be had children who they thought would be a good fit for the program. We serve that demographic of kids in that program during the school year as well.
Do you have available, not tonight, but do you have somewhere with, how many from each school?
I do. And I can get that for you, absolutely.
Oh, thank you. That would be great.
My pleasure.
And you said that the pro- you said it doubled in size, the.
Correct. The Y Readers Program overall doubled in size. We, 187 children completed the program. We did have spots for 192. So the Foster Reading Center traditionally serves 16 students. This year it served 32. We kept the program at Oakden, which is kind of our flagship site, has remained the same over the, or from each year, but we did expand in Dawes and at Washington.
Okay. And, and would you, you're not quite at capacity, but you're pretty close, it sounds like.
I'm sorry?
As far as, you're not quite at capacity, but you, it sounds like you're pretty close this summer.
This past summer, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Hannah?
I have a question. It's, I think similar to Claudia's. In the materials, we talked, it talks about, and this is in our packet, so I'm not sure if you can speak to it, but that because of expanding support for students, not only in the strategic reader, that we're now able to serve all eligible students. But I want to understand what that means because I'm not sure it means that we are serving all eligible students from all schools that would qualify. Is that correct? So I guess that, then the, corrects my question is, what percentage of the target population of those at 50% and below, are we serving? If that's 100, if we're serving 176, do we know what that represents for, for the Y Reader Program?
I just want to respond because actually that was part of the modification in expanding the program. The initial model that was piloted by YUSA was to serve students between the 30th and 50th percentile. Well, we didn't want to exclude students who were below the 30th percentile, so we worked with the Y to implement the model that serves all students under the 50th percentile in those target schools. So that's what it meant by serving all students.
Okay. So within the target schools, we're not necessarily covering all students through the Foster Reading Program because it's only a subsection of kids in the other schools.
Correct.
Okay. So whatever that, it would be interesting to know how many students rema- are, remain that, that's by the program.
Yeah.
It is providing such magnificent results, I think, with respect to maintaining and even increasing literacy for students. So just for us to know as we go forward.
Hannah, thank you for sharing that because it is just two or three students here or there from each of those schools. I think our largest was Kingsley with six or seven and I need to get you the specific information, but I think it's showing the interest from those other schools for students with those needs and, and through the relationship building and word of mouth and the, the growth that we're seeing in the program, I think that that interest continues to exist. So thank you for asking that question. Yes.
And I, I know we've got a lot of important information here and it's, it's really fantastic, everything that all of the organizations have provided. Without actually doing the math, it seems like these programs continue to be one of our smarter investments in terms of the, you know, the return, how the kids are growing. What I think, especially in the context of the conversation earlier tonight, could be helpful for the board is to have this data broken out by demographic groups so that we can see how students in different subgroups are progressing. So, you know, by race, by gender, by all the groups that we typically look at. But I, I think that's going to be a really important slice so we can see which groups are succeeding most and if there's any distinction between the success levels. So I don't know if that's something that we could do just as an FYI for a future meeting and not for the organizations to do, but for District 65 to do. I don't know how hard that would be.
Can I just quickly say, so when, when I came on board at the Y, that was one of the things that I brought to Jamila and John and they were very responsive. So we've started to talk about how to analyze the data differently and then also to look at the DRA scores. And so where are kids at the end of the year and where are they in the fall assessment window as well? So I think we want to bring you the data in a number of different ways.
Great. And I think starting with the Y would be fantastic and I think we would want to be able to support that across all of our partner organizations.
Great. Any other questions?
Are we taking like partner?
We are kind of doing it. That's right. Hang on for me. For the what? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In, in respect for everyone's time on a late night, I can start while the, the presentation comes up. I do want to start by saying how grateful we are to the incredible people that we work alongside. Every year when I come here, one of my greatest joys is actually hearing what I already know about, because we see the incredible work of Foundation 65 and the YMCA, but hearing the full reports, it's just spectacular. And as an agency that receives these young people in third grade, we're so grateful to be part of this collective impact. So thank you. And I also want to just say how grateful we are to be here to share with the district our summer learning program because this past summer, we were serving 358 District 65 children for nine weeks, from nine to four, every single day of the week. And you all were our facilities every one of those days and you also provided teachers. And so, I mean, your partnership was just a huge part of our impact. Megan Orleans is actually going to lead our presentation tonight. She's our Associate Director for Out of School Time Programs. Last year, Maria Rosiwallo was here, who's our director for that work. We actually got a picture of her newborn today. So she has a, her own youth development moment. That is very real. Well, Megan kind of begins the presentation. I just want to echo two thoughts for you all. I personally as well was very moved by the testimony earlier. And there are two aspects that I just was deeply touched by this summer that I think really resonated with points of feedback. One is that the summer learning program that you're going to hear about was extremely experiential and tailored to the unique learning of each child. So the ratio that you'll hear about, which was about one staff member to every seven youth, allowed us to go into these really experiential programs where kids were learning on their own terms, according to their own interests. The other thing I just want to name is the really intentional disciplinary approach that was taken at YOU always, including over the summer. Because what happens in those classrooms then with about 10 to 14 kids is you have two instructors. And we have a policy at YOU, which we train on around clinically informed care, a belief that if a child is acting out, they're acting out because there's a need, that we need to be really helping them to address proactively and in an asset-based way. And so we never call a child out because we don't want them to then identify themselves as a problem child. Instead, we have one-on-ones where, you know, a child is really addressed in an individual context that allows them to have their needs in a very proactive way solved. And a great part of that is every month, our teams are calling home to families to report on the good news that's happening in program and on the assets of the child. And so that then becomes this really asset-based way to treat the child and then to engage the family. And so I just, as we heard from a lot of parents about their interactions and what we know to be so true of so many of our families who are amazing and whose kids have just incredible potential, we feel like we are a wonderful complement to the school. We have a freedom that, that you all frankly don't in our ability to do this work over the summer. And, you know, as you'll hear in the presentation, I think we use that freedom to begin to address some of the structural issues that, you know, were at the root of many of the comments. So I, I turn it over to Megan for more specifics.
Thanks, Seth. We are really excited to report to you on our summer 2015 and also tell you about all the really exciting things we have coming up in summer 2016. So as a preface for summer 2015 and for summer 2016, our program is broken up into two core parts. We have our experiential learning electives with Seth, with, which Seth, excuse me, you touched on just a little bit. And these electives are really our core social and emotional time for our youth to start learning, but also is that core time where our youth can gain skills to become learners and problem solvers, which we find is very, very important. So we break our electives up into three tracks. We have our arts track, which focuses on developing academic motivation for reading and writing. We have our sports and character building track, which focuses on leadership qualities through sports. And then we have our STEM track, which I'm going to dive into a little bit deeper today, which really focuses on developing that idea of science is really exciting and we discover that through hands-on activities. Then core to YOU and what makes us a unique organization here in the Evanston landscape are life skills or social and emotional workshops. So during this time, we have kids working on what it means to be a leader, what it means to be a learner, but also what does it mean to be me? What does it mean to be me in this community? And we work through a bunch of different projects in this area. So over the summer, our kids at Washington, they decided that they wanted to beautify their school, so they painted the curb. Our staff maybe had to go back and clean up a little bit in that sense, but it was really great and they identified things they wanted to improve around the school. We had our middle schoolers running an anti-bullying campaign at their school and they developed all of the artwork to put PSAs up throughout the fall. So these are really core to what we do here at YOU and it's really exciting to see happening over the summer. And the ultimate goal of our life skills workshops, like I said, it's not just to touch on these competencies and make sure our youth are developing in a positive way, but it's really to make sure that as an organization, that we are helping to create and engage educated citizens and that our kids are excited about the city that they live in, that they want to be a part of it and that they see themselves as a part of it. So we're able to touch on that over the summer and throughout the school year. So just a snapshot of what our day looks like over the summer. Three days a week, our youth are in really great programs. They focus on our life skills workshops and they, they also focus on our enrichment time. The other two days out of the week, last summer on Wednesdays and Fridays, they were able to explore their community. So again, it's taking what we learned inside our school day camps and what we learned in our classroom and really applying it to what we can do out in the community. So we had our kids out there in Metta Media at the YMCA, which was super great. They're at the beach, they're at the library and they're really learning, how can I utilize all of the resources in my community so that I can, number one, engage with it, but number two, use these resources when I need something, help me achieve what I need to, what my goal is. So that's kind of, so this is a snapshot of what that would look like for us. And this year it'll look very similar as well. So what's really unique about YOU is that all of the topics that we hit on and all of the activities that we do are uniquely affirmed by our youth. So this data up here is presented from pre and post surveys from our youth. And you can see here that in healthy relationship building, at the end of the summer, more than nine in 10 youth could name one or more adults in their life that they trust, with a family member and a YOU staff member being common trusted adults. In regards to goal setting, more than seven in 10 youth gained a clear sense of their goals. And in skill development, most, so 57% overall, gained a new skill over the summer as a result of YOU programming. So again, that's that idea of, we really like our electives and our life skills workshops because that's where we're able to kind of connect content knowledge that our youth have and skill building, but we're able to connect it to their real world in a culturally relevant way that's meaningful to them. And overall, they'll leave the summer feeling that they've learned something, which is exciting to hear as an educator and that they're also excited to learn. But when it comes down to it, we are just one organization, as you can see, sitting here, that really makes this possible. So YOU, we have our goals, we have our objectives, but we couldn't make the profound impact that we have in our youth and our community without our partners. Some of which are District 65, which we're going to talk about with our engineering program. But then also, we're going to touch a little bit on Northwestern and the Talking Farm. But you can see here, we have plenty of other. But you can see here, we have plenty of other partners that we're not going to touch on today, but they're all really important to making an impact on our youth because it's really through these partnerships that we're able to connect our youth to opportunities to create meaningful learning experiences. So jumping in, I'm just going to talk a little bit about our STEM. Number one, we just want to thank the district for helping us partner with Engineering is Elementary at our elementary site. This is where District 65 teachers came in to our programs and they taught a handful of our youth, about 15 youth over the summer, over the entire nine weeks. And they, these youth built not only content knowledge in math and science and engineering, but they also learned how to communicate with one another and how to solve problems in a critical manner through structured group projects. So it's really amazing to see every day, these kids started with kind of, oh, it's summer, we feel like we're learning, and at the end, how excited they were to show all of the model cars that they had built and to tell us why this one was faster and how they would change the aerodynamics of this car in order to make it move faster and to beat the other group the next time around. And just to see the excitement and learning was fantastic, and we just want to thank the district for giving us that opportunity. And thank Jamila again for letting us know that it's going to happen again in 2016 so we can reach even more kids this year. Our next STEM example is the Talking Farm. At our middle school site, we were at Nichols, and luckily, at this point in time, our building was right across the street, and we have a garden out back. So what's really great about the Talking Farm is that they took a really STEM-centric approach to hands-on education. So they took the idea of gardening and they turned it into not only health of yourself and your body, but also health of a plant. So our kids left with some really, really great content knowledge. But at the same time, what we love so much about the Talking Farm and about our garden space is the fact that we're able to actually take our kids outside of the four walls of the classroom, and they're able to see the learning in front of them and see the content, take what they know from their science classes throughout the school year and have it happen in front of them. What's also really great about gardening, and gardening is one of my passions and one of my backgrounds with youth, is that you're able to unite youth around a common goal of, we have to get all of these tomatoes grown by August or else they're going to go away because we have to, you know, go on summer break and then go back to school. So it's amazing to see the teamwork that happens. They come up with their own watering schedules, they support one another in reaching these goals, and just the executive functioning that happens within a garden space, but it's kind of unbeknownst to the kids and happens in a natural way, it's really great, and Talking Farm was wonderful helping facilitate that whole group. Lastly, we have Science and Society through Northwestern University. This is a really great group that we have that runs not only throughout the summer but also throughout the school year. We really enjoy Science and Society because they provide our youth with the ability to do an informal apprenticeship. So the structure of this program, we have volunteer scientists from the university actually come in and work in small groups with our youth. So we'll have a group of about 10 students, and then there's a really small student to staff ratio because there's about six scientists in the room that these kids get to work through their project-based learning with. And then what's awesome about that is that they create this really safe space, so they're in a familiar setting of their classrooms. They have scientists there that are their content experts, and there's this safe space for them to take learning risks, which we really, really like to see. So they're engaging in the scientific method. They are creating a growth mindset because maybe their hypothesis isn't turning out the way they want, and they reset and say, well, how can we figure it out from a different angle? And most importantly, Northwestern brings really great science equipment for our youth to engage with, so it adds that idea of professionalism in the science field and really exposes our youth to what a STEM career could look like. And Seth, did you want to talk about this?
Just really briefly, we are so excited about the upcoming summer as well, and Adila mentioned just any directions that we might have and to share them. So if you go to the next slide, we have been very closely working with the consortium. There is a really exciting framework that came out this summer from the consortium that really speaks to us as educators and out of school time. It's a Framework for Young Adult Success. And essentially, what you're going to hear in a moment is that this broader research-based framework has really become a catalyst for uniting our thinking and, in particular, for summer, really going deeper into a project-based learning context. That's all.
Absolutely. And just to draw your attention to that last sentence on this slide, so the four foundational components that the consortium believes happen with learning, they have to overlap and happen together, are self-regulation mindsets, values, knowledge and skills. And we're working this summer as, within our framework, to make sure that we're meeting all of those components at a developmentally appropriate level within all of our youth. So that's leading the new structure of our program, which is going to be project-based learning. And this is going to come for our life skills portion of our summer. So that'll be where before, our youth were doing it on a kind of, on a smaller scale in regards to, oh, we're doing service learning this week, we decided we wanted to beautify our school, this is what we want to do. We're really going to scale that up because that's where we see most success with our youth, is when our youth say, this is who I am, these are questions I have, this is what I want to know about my community, and this is how I want to change my community. When we meet that need for our youth, we just see them grow exponentially over the summer, and their engagement is off the charts. So we're really excited to scale that up in a very, very intentional way. So project-based learning basically puts the youth at the center of their learning experience. They get to say, this is who I am, this is what I want to do, this is what I want to know. And we've trained all of our staff to say, okay, that's great, let's talk about how we can get you there. It's about youth making choices in their pathways, it's about them having a growth mindset and saying like, hey, I really thought I wanted to do this, but now I'm discovering X, so I want to go in this new direction, or I discovered X and I need to go back. And it's teaching them how to be resilient and be gritty and get through those challenges that they may discover in their own learning, in their gaps in their own knowledge and addressing that and owning that. But more importantly, it's in a really culturally relevant way. So this, they get to take their own community, their own life and their own experiences and share that with others and grow from that and become engaged in their community. And again, in the hopes that we're creating really engaged and educated citizens. So for project-based learning, we're excited to see that because it's really where we see the consortium kind of, all of the different layers of learning overlapping. And we are going to start this spring with a pilot and then continue that into the summer, and hopefully it'll be a namesake for us and we'll be able to kind of change how our youth approach learning. And ultimately, through our hope with project-based learning is that we are creating learners and developing a foundation so that our students know how to learn and know how to approach learning, and that we're also developing problem solvers, and that we're also, most importantly, developing youth who have an aspiration to dream big, and that they're excited to dream big, and that they feel safe and confident enough in themselves that they'll take the risk to dream big. So that's our ultimate goal in the end. And just really briefly, we're going to keep building with our STEM. As I mentioned, Jamila, just let us know that we're getting Engineering is Elementary back again this year with District 65 teachers. We also just wanted to bring up that we have a really exciting new partnership. So all of our partnerships that I had mentioned will continue, but also we're going to add in our partnership with the Museum of Science and Industry. They have a really wonderful program where they've been training all of our staff at the elementary level. And right now, what's happening at Dawes and Washington Elementary Schools is our kids are designing a Mars rover and are designing what it would look like to live on Mars through a series of project-based learning tasks. We're getting trained on a whole new curriculum, we don't know what it is yet, in March, but we're excited. And we have, we're excited to have our staff with the capabilities to implement both of these new curriculums over the summer. And just, again, thank you for the opportunity to present here and just also keep YOu doing what it's doing.
And? Thank you very much. Questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Congratulations on wonderful content. It looks like it was a super summer and it's going to be a super spring. How do you recruit the kids that come into your program? Let's stick with summer for...
Sure. So our summer program, at our elementary level, we like to target our rising third graders. So they're a big target, they're new to YOu. Hopefully, they've been in many other of our wonderful summer programs that we know of. We're able to scoop them up and they can become part of our YOu family. We're also really big on our continuum. So a youth who's been in our program before, we want to see them remain in the YOu family if we can, all the way up until they graduate high school at ETHS. So we have a continuum approach, so anyone who's been in our program, they're automatically enrolled and eligible for our summer program. And then, of course, we are able to partner with our schools. So principal referrals, teacher referrals, social worker referrals, we really try to be integrated within to our school community so that we're serving the kids who have a need for, to grow the skills that we provide within our program.
Do you have any feel for what percentage of the kids that you serve are, would be struggling people, kids that aren't meeting standards, kids that aren't on track for college and career readiness, that sort of thing?
I'll defer to Seth on this one.
So, I mean, the indicator that's the easiest to judge is, are they on free or reduced lunch? And so, 86% of the kids in YOu programs are in free or reduced lunch. And I want to emphasize that we've been very intentional not to make rigid requirements and to keep our programs open for all the reasons that you'd expect. And at the same time, the channels that we use, so going through social workers most of all, and then teachers and principals, and saying that we wanted to address a need that would otherwise not be filled during this time period, has allowed us to both be open and be focused at the same time, if that makes sense. In terms of some of the other needs, what I would just observe is that, you know, we have found our sweet spot, and we've talked about this internally within Tier Two, and, you know, we have found as an agency that, with the exception of places where we've been able to partner, you know, the, for example, Tier Three where someone needs an individualized support, that we may not be successful enough for that level of need. And so, you know, we've focused on what we very much see as a great need, and at the same time, really wanted to be in a place where we're focused on need that we can meet and be successful with.
Would you be willing to go out on a limb and say you are helping us address the achievement gap?
I would say that we are very, very much helping address the opportunity gap, and we believe that the opportunity gap is a prerequisite to the achievement gap. As an agency, we think in some ways that trying to address the achievement gap at the surface level is very challenging. And one of the things that I thought was very powerful about the testimony earlier was the systemic nature of the felt concerns. So while the achievement gap was, I think, the reason that people came tonight, because that's a number, what I heard was much more around the systematic issues that continue structural inequities that are very meaningful. And so my hope is that most of all, we're a social justice institution and we are helping to better those social inequities, which are the environment in which the achievement gap happens.
Thank you.
So the programming is fabulous, and I guess I'll point out, as we're talking about equity, a concern that I've raised before...
Right.
...in that some of our students, and particularly those students that are not in Title I schools that are in the Fifth Ward in particular, don't, cannot avail themselves of this program. So I think the question to us is, what is this, what is the answer? What is the partner? Who is the partner, if there are multiple partners, to serve with this level of quality of programming for this type of engagement for all the kids, you know, in this three to eight spot? We have, we're addressing that for younger youth, although, as we just talked about, not all those students that meet that requirement. But for us to think really about the kids, and I don't know if it, hopefully it plays into your longer-term strategic plan, Seth, I do not know. I know we have partners in Family Focus and Fleetwood, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that. But I just want to draw, again, our attention to that because it's clearly a group that's missing and that we're deeply concerned about. So I think the open question would be, and you know, a few years ago, we tried, you know, adding some students, maybe it's particularly with respect to the engineering component, which is District 65-driven. Is there any way that that can be replicated or provided in part to reach beyond some of the core students that are going to your sites? Just ask us to think about that.
I just have to second what Candace is saying because it's just so important, and every year, it just kills me that we're, there's so many kids that we're not helping.
Well, I mean, just to affirm what you've said, you know, we have parents, because we serve King Arts, for example, that will share with me, you know, how painful it is because one child is in the program and another child goes to a school where it's not available, and, you know, there is a child who's getting just so many more needs met. And, you know, there's a sibling that's jealous. And, I mean, in my mind, there's nothing more tragic than a sibling jealous because they want to learn every day after school in experiential ways and we haven't found a way to open the door. And so, I mean, as an agency, you know, what we're focused on is, in our programmatic planning process right now, how do we think about the remaining needs even after we and others have grown dramatically? And then, how do we think about our role within this incredible ecosystem in continuing to meet that need? And I would certainly affirm that we see that need as very real and, you know, are very much beginning to think about what our place can be, particularly, you know, with our future home as a headquarters, being in that neighborhood of the Fifth Ward, and how we can be, you know, really a part of the incredible ecosystem that already exists.
And I would expand on your point because I think it's one you've raised many times and it's really important. We look at the numbers for participation in the Y Reader program from, you know, three or four summers ago, I guess, 32 students up to 187, right? Obviously, a significant increase. The way I think, I'd like to think about it is, how do we capture 100% of the students? And their location shouldn't matter. We know that some schools, because of their Title I status, qualify for not just support from YOu but from other types of grants and resources too. How do we do that? Because this is, it's a leading indicator for the outcomes that we've committed to in our, the scorecard that's going to measure our strategic plan. And it's predictable that children who participate in, and pointing at the Y Reader sheet, but it applies to all of our, the programs for our partners. So how do we make that happen? I don't have the answer, but I feel like, I do wonder, can we answer that question for this coming summer? And it might not be 100% all in one year, but what do we need to do collaboratively to build so that in two years or three years, we've got 100%? And obviously, we have to identify 100% of what, right? Which, because they, they're targeting different demographics slightly, but I would imagine that we all agree with that.
Yes.
I mean, I see you all nodding, but so how do we, how does that fit in with the strategic plan and what we have committed to there?
Can I ask a question in this?
Yeah.
I haven't been, several of you participate on Cradle to Career, and I think Sheila Mary's not there anymore. But is there any function in any of the subgroups talking about summer learning? Like, are they a nexus for helping figure out, you know, the collective impact?
When we get to the 2016, we actually have addressed these questions to a degree, so hopefully you'll find some comfort in what we're bringing to you. So I just want to, while you finish, if you had anything to add to this.
Could you send the slides to us?
Oh, yeah.
I'll copy those.
Yeah, there they are.
Was it the same presentation? Okay.
The committee that I'm on, which is on track for literary readiness, and they, they're talking about benchmarks for kindergarten and then looking at different indicators in the early grades to make sure kids are getting the literacy dose they need. And I think that that is part of their mission, to try to figure out, where do we supplement? Because we know we're not getting kids early enough, so it's kind of indirectly, but not directly, but it is something they're looking at different ways.
Including like, the word "summer"?
I don't think summer has come up. Right. It's not, but it certainly is in the conversations.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I want to really say how proud I am to work with such wonderful partners. The work that Linda has done was one of the best-kept secrets in the district for many, many years. And using the foundational work that she has done, of course, it has been rolled into our summer program. And of course, we love working with the Y. The project that YUSA International started was piloted here at Evanston, and we were able to roll that into our programming, and we've just had an ongoing and expanding relationship with YOu as well. So we work very closely together, and it's one of the smartest things that we have ever done, to really work so closely with our partners because we're excellent at education and they are excellent at providing all the other wraparound services. And so together, we do some really remarkable things. I also want to acknowledge some of our partners who are not here with us because we also partnered with Northwestern University for Project Excite. And we also worked with the City of Evanston at the Fleetwood Jordane site to expand the reach of students in our summer learning zone. So I want to acknowledge them as well. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk a little bit about what is in 2015, and if the partners can stay, we also... And if the partners can stay, we also, all the partners are involved in the 2016 work as well. And I want to do one more thing. I also want to acknowledge the fact that everything that happens in summer learning, all of the departments that are involved are the same departments that make school happen during the regular year. So I have the great privilege of working with Human Resources and Buildings and Grounds and RED, and of course, all of my colleagues in Curriculum and Special Services. And again, we are a really tight group and we really work hard to answer a lot of questions, to respond to a lot of needs because our students have some dramatic needs and we are very committed to making sure that we address them to the best of our abilities. So let me just walk through a few more pieces of the 2015 report. I believe you received even an updated copy because there were some things that we needed to address. Thank you very much. So I also, I want to talk about the Special Services, well, first of all, our newcomer program. Just to remind you that we did serve about forty-five newcomer students. Those are students who are new to the United States within the last eighteen months. So we were very glad to be able to provide them with lots of opportunities. I mentioned our Project Excite staff. I also wanted to mention the middle school scholarships that we provided. There were three young people who got a ninety-five percent scholarship to Camp Wannago, which is a full-day camp, and in addition to that, a two-week scholarship to Camp Echo. So that was one of the ways we tried to reach out and get to some of our middle school students because we didn't have a really strong, broad middle school component last year. You've brought that to our attention, and that was one of the ways that we addressed that.
Can I just jump in here and ask how those students were chosen and what schools they came from?
We worked with the social workers and we chose, we invited students from Shute, Nichols, and Haven. The students who were able to participate were ultimately from Nichols and Haven. At Fleetwood Jordane, again, what we're trying to do is, we know that we have a limited capacity in terms of students we can house, so we're trying to figure out how we can bring more services to where students already are. And what we did was we worked with the staff at Fleetwood Jordane to select some Brain Unlimited Games, the Games from Models the Brain Store. We selected a range of games, from the very early developmental games to, you know, much older students. We had an orientation session for their staff so that they could really beef up the academic portion of their programming in the summer. And we had a staff member that was able to go over there for a couple of times to kind of check in on them. And I'll talk more about that, how that's going to be expanded in the 2016 model. So that was our general education programming. We don't want to forget all the wonderful work that happens with our special needs students. So we did have all of our special needs students, well, most of them housed at the King Arts site this year. We implemented an expansion of the program that happens at Park. We included the option students, the low-income students from Nichols and, what am I thinking? King Arts, Nichols, and Lincoln. And Lincoln. So they were able to participate in a full-day, fifteen-day program at the beginning of the summer, and then they moved to the Park site to be involved in the recreation program that's provided by the City of Evanston. So some wonderful work was happening with those students as well. So let's talk a little bit about the data that we have collected. Oh, well, let me go to some enrollment notes. We expanded the way we track enrollment this year, and we discovered, because we knew we would have students in multiple programs, and we discovered that we have some students who have been participating in some really strong programs at the same time. We had forty-seven students who were identified for the Foundation 65 Summer Reading at Home program who also participated in the Y Reader program. We had fifty-five students who were Y readers who are in the District 65 Summer Reading program. So what that says to us is, we're really excited about the results, and we need to dig a little deeper to see if the students need that amount of wraparound support, or do we need to expand and spread out those supports to some students who are not currently being served? So that was revealed in the way that we collected enrollment data this summer. We did have a hundred and twelve students who were uniquely served at the first, Rising First Graders in the District 65 Summer Reading at Home program. Sixty-one who were uniquely served through the Foundation 65, no, through the District 65 Rising Third Graders, and a hundred and ten Rising Second who were uniquely served in the Foundation 65 program. So there was some overlap, but there were some students who were uniquely served as well. And in addition, we've been tracking students for the last few years, so we see that there are a number of students who have been in support, summer support programs for multiple years as well. And some of those are non-ESY students, so that's important also. In terms of the academic data, we have learned that we had data for about two-hundred-sixty-nine students. Ninety-six of them maintained their DRA level from the spring to the fall. We had a hundred and three students who progressed from one level, increased one level. We had nineteen students who progressed two levels, and fifteen who progressed three or more levels from spring to fall. One of the things that we are noticing about the data, though, it was mentioned earlier that some students, the DRA score wasn't taken early in September. So we just have to be mindful that there might be the influence of instruction, but we're still encouraged that students are showing academic growth. So that was our data on the achievement, and you also have in your packet the financial outcomes and everything is as it should be. So I think that's pretty much what we want to say about the 2015 program. So if there are any questions you have about that, I'm happy to entertain those and then get right into our exciting plans for 2016.
Let me just comment one thing, which is Richard's last question. And as we are part of a planning team, how do we think about, because there are children who have the opportunity to be in more than one program, we might want to be reflective on what makes most sense so that we can potentially expand those resources for more uniquely served children.
Definitely. Definitely. Any other questions about 2015?
I just wanted a quick question because I don't think we, about the Jump Start program.
Oh, yes.
It says it supports adolescent students and prepares them for kindergarten. Can we talk a little bit about how, how many students were served? I don't remember if that was in there.
So there were fifty-one, so in our pre-K program, we serve, the Jump Start is for the general education pre-K students, and we have the Services for Pre-Primary Age Children SPAC, which serves the pre-K special needs students. So we had fifty-one students who were served in the General Education Jump Start program and forty-five in the SPAC program.
So they have to be enrolled here?
Yes, those students are already enrolled in our pre-K program and are identified by the Early Childhood Staff for continued support in the summer.
I feel like, maybe this was a couple of years ago, we talked about, that there was, there'll be some, we identified students who maybe hadn't had any pre-K experience and gave them, even if it was just like, I think, a couple of weeks over the summer, some sort of summer programming for those students, so that kindergarten, the first day of kindergarten wasn't their first experience in that setting. Is that something that we're still doing or it sounds like maybe not?
From what I understand, we are really, the enrollment is really drawn from students who are already enrolled in our pre-K programs, but those who are showing need of support to be ready for kindergarten.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have a, sort of a Jump Start for, it was like thirty-six percent, wasn't it? It was a decent number of kids who have no, zero pre-K.
Pre-K experience. And we were somehow serving those at one point.
It wasn't that high.
But it's still some, it's some, whatever.
I think at the time, remembering the conversation at the time, there was, it was more of a logistical issue of getting participation, not finding, I mean, we knew who they were, but, because I think this goes back to like two thirteen, twenty thirteen, that it wasn't as successful. Not many kids had enrolled in it because it was a combination of working with the families to do that. Doesn't mean that, that some other different approach or, you know, augmenting experience when they're first in school in some other way versus just in terms of to provide the Jump Start function doesn't necessarily have to happen over the summer.
I have a question about the District 65 Summer at Home Reading Program versus the Foundation 65. Are they, I know it's modeled on Foundation 65, are they exactly the same in their approach and their execution, or are they slightly different?
They're slightly different, not exactly the same. So last year, we started with the Rising First Grade students, I'm trying to get my lingo correct. And because those students are very young, it was, I think, really an easy decision to say that the district was going to decide on the texts that were provided. A similar profile in terms of the number of fiction or nonfiction texts. But we also select the text for the second grade students as well. We don't have quite the capacity because Linda sets up an entire bookstore in this very room and invites the reading specialists over, and they spend a day and probably more than that selecting the text. So we're looking at how we might do a more personalized model for the Rising Third Graders in this upcoming year.
Because I, you know, it could be the function of some of these kids getting two different programs, but it looks like, just glancing at it, that sixty-six percent maintain and increased in the District 65 program, eighty-five did for Foundation 65. So that's pretty significant, and it seems like we should be, you know, it's such a critical time that if twenty point, I mean, that would be a...
Isn't it the same? Increased and maintained is the same, but increased is lower.
No, if you add and maintained and increased for the District 65 Summer at Home, that's about sixty-six percent of the whole, and then for Foundation 65, unless I did it wrong, was eighty-five percent.
But I think your observation is still pertinent. I think that if you take them as a research model, and we always talk about fidelity to program design, that the personal touch really makes a difference. We heard it earlier tonight, that relationship is very important. So we're thinking about how we can roll that into the version of the program that we are implementing.
Is it funding that limits the personalized touch in the early grades?
Teacher availability. In the District 65, in the Foundation 65 program, those teachers are already assigned to those students all year, and they pretty much developed an expectation and have made plans to support students in that way over the summer. So we're having conversations, is it better to do the teacher that the child is leaving? Is it better to do the teacher that will be receiving the child? Should we include the librarian? So those are the kinds of conversations that we're having about, who will have the quality of relationship with the child and the family so that we can keep that, the excitement about reading and the support for the family alive across the summer.
Is it conceivable that it would be an easier task to funnel some of our money into, have Foundation 65, it already has the program up and running into that program and not reinvent it ourselves?
That's, we should probably have that conversation. I know at least we can respond.
I think that, you know, Jamila just kind of alluded to the fact that our program's built on this relationship with teachers who have spent a lot of time with their students. So we're building on an existing relationship, and I think one of the challenges that the district has is that teacher-student and teacher-family relationship is not as strong. And that's really why Linda picked Rising Second Graders because it complements the work that's already happening during the school year. Just one additional kind of logistical thing that we do differently is that the teachers that Foundation 65 works with very intentionally times out the mailing of these packages. I think the district, the students get them at two points during the summer, in the beginning of the summer and maybe the middle.
Not two, three, three.
And then you check in in the middle, yeah. Yeah. With the Foundation 65 program, we time it so that first package of books arrives the week that school is out. So there's no lapse between when a student, you know, leaves school and when they get these reading materials, and then every two weeks, they get another package. So there are small differences between the two, and, but we're eager to really put our heads together and share best practices and how can we, how can we help each other?
What I would say that we learned in our experience with the Y Reader program, when we first tried to implement it, we tried a modified model, and it was not as successful as a result that we were getting with the program fidelity model. So I think the same kinds of conversations we can have, because what did we end up doing? We said, let's let the Y do what they do best and figure out how we can support it and make it happen. So it looks like we can do the same thing with Foundation 65.
Any questions?
So on this data question, I think, my question is, what does incomplete mean? Because if you take out incomplete, which is what I did, then eighty-five percent do maintain or increase, and it's similar to the Foundation 65. So what does incomplete mean? Should that...
Incomplete were students for whom we did not have either a spring or fall. Some of those students, I think about forty of them.
DRA.
Right, the DRA score, I'm sorry, that's a sentence. Some of them are tweed students, so there might not be an expectation that we have that for all of those students, but we have noticed that that is a data gap, and we're going to figure some ways to address that as well.
So if you do take that out because we don't have the data, then the percentage that increased or maintained is eighty-six percent, and it's commensurate with Foundation 65. The thing I found interesting about that, those two charts, when you compare it to the overall programs, again, maintain and increase is the same, even though our, some of our other programs are more high-touch, I presume with, you know, with the primary Y Reader programs and so forth. However, the students who, percentage of students who increased was higher, which makes sense in the top category across all programs because, again, it is more high-touch and, you know, more structured programming. So I think that, in my mind also think, as we think about what are the goals, you know, the Foundation 65 program is clearly, the goal is to maintain. Do we have different goals based on a more structured in-class kind of program versus an at-home program? So, but overall, I mean, it's pretty awesome results. I was wondering, this is specific to primary students, so, and first off, thank you for responding to the concerns we had last year around not touching middle school because I think some of the innovative ways you started that is very helpful. I'm wondering if there's any results around, you had an at-home program for Rising Sixth and Seventh, Rising Seventh and Eighth.
Right, yes, we did. Thank you for reminding me. I should have mentioned that.
And did, you know, what, how did that work?
We did not look at data for those students, so that's an opportunity for, okay.
I just, I want to, I guess, acknowledge and ask, and acknowledgement is just thinking about how far we have come with summer learning in the four and a half years I've been on the board. I mean, it's pretty remarkable how much of a community investment, when we talked about, as we were earlier, it's a we, it's the entire community needing to get behind something. And I have to say, this is usually one of my favorite meetings because, you know, we usually get such great news from all of our partners and about the progress that our students have made. So that's fantastic. And as I think about how this all started, there were sort of more fragmented approaches, right? Like each group was sort of doing their own thing, and I think at some point, you each came and talked about your programs, and now you all come together, and we have one report that's trying to tie everything together. And I did read the recommendations for next year. What I would be thrilled about if we could do for next year is just be really clear about where we're getting the most impact on our students and how we invest the dollars across all of our programs in the best way possible to maximize the number of students that we can reach. And I know that you all have constraints because of your different funding sources, which complicates who you can reach and what schools they are attending and all of those factors, right? But I'm thrilled with everything that we've seen, and I think for, not necessarily for the 2016 summer plans, but for 2017, if we could apply that different lens to it, really specifically about impact dollars and the goal of reaching a hundred percent of our students, again, depending on how we define the hundred percent, that I would really appreciate as a goal, and I don't know if, what other board members might think about that if I didn't ramble too much.
I think that it would be certainly a huge stretch goal to reach a hundred percent by 2016 summer, but I think we could make some dent in that.
And I think the proposal is, duh, it's increasing the numbers, you know, in incremental sort of way. What are you thinking?
I think it does come to the question of a hundred percent of what? Is that, do we look at, you know, in our term, do we look at an academic performance metric that is, you know, sticking with that fifty percentile? Is that the right place? And, you know, I would defer to the team to think through what's the right target for us. And then when we have that target, I think, you know, there's certainly just amazing brains in these partnerships to galvanize around that and the whole community. I mean, looking at even the Foster Reading Program that doubled this past summer, quite frankly, that was because there was a lot of money raised by community members who saw what great work was doing and wanted it to, so, wanted it to happen and happen more broadly. So if we set the stake in the ground, I think that... we set the stake in the ground, I think then we can make it happen, even if it does require funding sources beyond what we see today.
If we could identify the what that we want the 100% of, if we could do that this year, then we could actually see next year as we're looking at the future, you know, the, you know, how many we're serving and so how much farther we have to go. So that would be, I think, something we could do now, you know, defining our terms.
Well, I mean, I, the way I look at it, and I think we've, we've started having some of these discussions in our policy committee meetings about promotion and, and what do we do about kids who end the year still not at grade level? And so to me, it feels like that's how, when we're looking at 100% of what, I think that we need to focus on who at the end of the year, and I don't suggest that we just start these interventions at the end of the year, obviously, but, you know, who should we target for summer learning? It's kids who are not actually finishing the year at grade level. And we're going to, you know, for a lot of reasons, we want to promote them anyway. But are we just widening that gap because then they enter the next year still not prepared? So to me, it makes sense to look at the 100% in that way. Make sure that every kid who is not at grade level is in some sort of summer program.
Thank you.
Do you want to, do you have more to present until then?
I would like to roll right into 2016, if that's...
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
Great, all right. Thank you so much. And let me thank you first for bringing this to the December board meeting because hopefully you'll approve this tonight. And that just gives us that much more time to work with our partners and identify students and support families so that we can enroll all the children that we can for the upcoming 2016 program. So we have maintained the same priorities that we had in the previous year, a focus on literacy and social-emotional learning, of course, supporting at-risk students, providing early intervention, seeking to engage families, looking for data that tells us how effective our programs are, and leveraging our dollars so that they're the most effective investment. We looked at all the input that you gave us last year. We annually provide a survey to anyone who participates in any of the summer learning programs. And we had feedback from teachers. Of course, we hear from families, those who are served. We have heard from those who have not been served and wanted to be. All of that is the input that we considered when we were shaping this proposal. Some of the new things that we, so, because the outcomes were so favorable, we are going to continue with the programs that we had last year with some enhancements. We will be adding a fourth site to the Y Reader program. The Y is able to handle that capacity. It will be at the Walker School. It will be a kindergarten or a rising first and rising second grade group of students. So of course, that means those students will continue in the subsequent year with a, a new rising first in the following year. We will enhance our support at Fleetwood Jordan. Many of the families that we're trying to serve, they happen to send their children to camp there. So we figure, let's just go there and try to reach them where they already are. We will have certified staff go there on a more regular basis because we did some work with the staff who were there. But when you're talking about academics, you really need certified staff to, to make a meaningful difference. So we'll be enhancing that program in that way. We are expanding our opportunity for middle school students because we're going to be adding a pre-algebra program for students who might, with some support, qualify and get some support, get them to the Algebra I classes. We will expand the scholarship opportunities because we will be providing a two-week scholarship in combination with the Y NCA to Camp Echo, to students in fourth, well, fourth grade and up at each of our elementary schools. So that's 15 scholarships there. So really excited about the ways that we are expanding the service, the programming this summer. Of course, we're going to continue to work with YU, the Y Readers, Jump Start newcomers. Let's see. Yes, those are all our fantastic programs. So our dollars are listed there. The dollars are about, about $40,000 more than we had last year. But as we said, the primary driver of that is the expansion of the Y Reader program and the addition of the pre-algebra class. Questions, comments?
Questions?
I didn't think we were voting to this tonight.
We're not voting tonight. We're actually just discussing tonight. We're voting at a later meeting.
Because, because I do have some more questions, but I think I want to formulate them a little bit more before. When would it come back to us?
January.
January?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's funny.
Okay. Any other questions? Candace?
As you're enhancing the service for Fleetwood Jordan, which I think is wonderful, has any, and I don't know what the age of the students are and how it compares, but I wonder if there's been any thought in also talking with Family Focus about doing something similar. We have a lot of, a number of students, you know, 30 to 50 students who have their summer Family Focus. I would say from a demographic standpoint, those students come from even higher needs families than, just based on the pricing of Fleetwood Jordan versus, versus Family Focus. And they're certainly wanting to look to partner with us in ways that we could share our academic expertise to support what they're doing over the summer. So maybe there's a way to kill two birds with one stone, as my mother used to say. We might be able to leverage those resources just as a consideration.
May I just add that we do look forward to your speedy response because we know that families make summer plans as early as January. And so we like to be able to invite families and confirm with them about what we plan for their students as early as possible. So we'd just like to always keep that in the mind in front of here.
I do just want to ask, the, although I think the middle school pre-algebra program sounds like it could be really positive, I'm, I just want to understand why we might be choosing that investment over something else.
Can I, can I toss it to?
So we've had, been having a number of conversations related to acceleration and compaction. One of the things that has come out of that conversation is conversation, is a discussion of Algebra VIII and Algebra I enrollment and how we can potentially create more opportunities to be, for students to be successful in Algebra I. And so this course would be an opportunity for students exiting Math VII who maybe still don't have the necessary foundation to be successful in Algebra I, to have an opportunity to engage in a program with us over the summer that would open up that opportunity for them to be successful in Algebra I. And then this links also with the conversation Mitsuo has been having a little bit with District 202 about the importance of helping kids to be successful in algebra, to be able to avoid kind of getting locked into a psycho, a different math cycle once they hit 202. So we see this as an opportunity to essentially meet the needs of a group of kids that may not necessarily have access to that Algebra I course without this opportunity.
I, I think that's a, I guess, jump in here. I think that's a lot of a goal. Sorry. But what are we doing about the 100 kids who can't read?
The, so, understood. I know that's a big question. Right now, the eyes for literacy initially right now are on this K3 framework. But we are also doing a lot of RTI work that involves some work around Read 180, leveled literacy intervention, and a number of other things in the middle school spaces, working to accelerate the reading skills of our lowest level, of the students that are performing at the lowest levels for reading in the middle schools. But that is a space that we're looking at. And I know I just recently spent concentrated period of time at Nichols with our middle school reading coach, really talking through some of those aspects. And so I don't see these as mutually exclusive. I completely understand the urgency, but this is another area where we're hoping to create some opportunity.
I don't really want to get into this exact question, but I would put it on the table. And that's the question of like, why aren't kids prepared at the end of a school year to go into Algebra I successfully? I mean, that's, I don't have to take that question on now, but it kind of, it's the backtrack. I'd like to get to the park results because we can talk about math there. But I think it needs to be said that it's the lead-up. It's not just the end of seventh grade.
Well, certainly, but we know what is what, what is is right now, right? So offering some intervention so that it can accelerate.
How do you choose between literacy and math? I don't know how you make those choices.
Or even math at younger grade.
Exactly. I don't know.
You know, I think, you know, we understand those levels of concern and it is not, these are not exclusive conversations. There's clearly, you know, we've got a number of conversations and a lot of work going on, you know, to look at the trajectory K8 of both literacy and math and really trying to figure out how we address now needs and long-term needs.
But, but we do have before us, and expected to approve in January, a proposal for the Algebra I students. We have nothing for those 100 kids if it were to turn out to be the same number again for summer. And, and that, that's really concerning to me.
Okay.
And I can definitely take that comment as a thing.
Also is a middle school, this reading, and I think it's, unfortunately, we didn't hear anything about what the results were. But that was a foray for, around literacy for middle school students, which I assume would be targeted to students that are not needing grade level achievement. Maybe we need to also...
But I don't, we don't know what percentage of our...
Of the total university.
Right.
Correct.
Well, maybe what we're hearing is concern about this equity between the literacy and the math for the middle school and the struggle of students. So maybe when we bring this back, there will be some way to show where the equivalent is happening in the reading.
Well, I think you're, you're touching on my concern, which is, should we be investing in math? Or should we be taking those dollars and invest them in something else related to literacy, which is where I think we see, no matter where you're looking, more of a, more challenges, I think. And I realize, you know, you say, you didn't say this, but anyone could say, well, it's only $10,000 out of, you know, 108 million dollar budget. But how many students could we impact for $10,000?
I, I think what we can do, the, last year, the reason SHU was able to offer that program, they had Title I dollars that were available for them, to the, to them. So students at that site were able to be served. So I think you're asking us to see, how can we serve students at a middle school capacity and find some dollars to do it? And I'm sure we'll be very creative.
And I think this, this presentation has evolved so much over the years. And I think what the board's looking for is to sort of fill in those gaps. We don't have a good sense of how many students and what, of what are being served and the subjects and the grades. So as you're gathering more data about how successful the programs are, we also want to fill in the whole landscape of where, which kids are actually being touched.
And I appreciate your patience with it because as I think you brought up, we tried to do a broad service before. It was a little bit to everybody. And we, we recognized that it wasn't really making a significant difference. So now we're taking some models that we know do make a significant difference. We're trying to make sure they are strong. And at the same time, I think we need to grow and expand them to meet the continuing students that are calling for our service and support.
I think that's the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much again.
And thank you to our community partners.
Yeah, thank you so much.
For your, for your patience.
Okay. And now I think we're gonna do a drive-by of the park.
So as, and thank you again, community partners. It's really important. As Peter gets ready to start a presentation on our part, I think it's, again, it's worth saying that the, the results are sobering, but they're urgent and they create a sense of urgency for all of us as we, we move forward. So with that, I'm going to turn to you. Please.
All right. Thank you. I'm passing around some slides because we realized, excuse me, this afternoon, that the version that had been posted in the board packet on Friday had some blank spaces. So I was not intending that you would have to pull out your markers and create your own charts. Instead, you'll have a copy that has the slides that I'll show here on the screen, and it's been revised in the board packet online. I want to just start out with a little background about the park assessment. I think you may be familiar with it, but just to refresh your memory, that it is an assessment that was adopted last year by the state of Illinois as well as some other states across the nation. It is aligned with the Common Core state standards in terms of the questions and prompts that are included on the English Language Arts and Math tests. It's computer-based. And most of our students in District 65 took it in a computer-based format, except for a handful of students who had a paper-based alternative. And in the data that I will present tonight, I'm going to include not just park results, but also results from the Dynamic Learning Maps Alternate Assessment, which was also a new assessment here in Illinois last year. It's a test that's given to students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. And so across the state, this represents less than 1% of students. And that's true here in District 65 as well. You will also remember, and I've noted some detail in my memo, that this test is both federally and state required. And so there was a lot of discussion in our community about whether that was the right thing to do. Ultimately, Dr. Goran implemented the test because we had a letter from the state superintendent indicating that our Title I funds and other funds might be withheld if we did not move forward. But I think you'll see when we look at participation rates, that the conversation that was had in the community and the, the feelings that folks had about whether this is appropriate for their students ended up being reflected in our participation rates. Overall, the test is scored on a scale score. And those scale scores are broken down into five proficiency levels. In your board memo, there is a note about the way that the scores were set and how those performance levels were determined. But the, the short version of that story is that it involved both looking at particular skills and having a group of about 250 educators get together and look at the descriptors of what a student in third grade who met standards should be able to do, what a student in third grade who exceeded standard should be able to do, and how those skills were actually demonstrated in responses that students wrote on the park assessment. That was part of the work that was done. And the other thing that was done was to look at students' scores, the distribution of scores on high school standardized assessments like the ACT, but also including SAT and a number of other tests like the P's that are given across nations. And so the idea was to both look at whether students were able to demonstrate particular skills that were described in the Common Core standards, and also to look at whether that was predictive of their success when they got to college. And so the, the definition of college readiness that was adopted by the park states was a 75% likelihood of a C or higher in the first year college course associated with the subject, either English Language Arts or Math. And this is aligned, to some extent, with the definition that ACT uses for their college readiness benchmarks, which have been a part of our District 65 reporting. ACT adds that in addition to the 75% likelihood of a C, an ACT college-ready score would also indicate a 50% likelihood of a B. So let me talk a little bit about participation. District-wide, we had a 91% participation rate in the English Language Arts Assessment and about a 92% participation rate in the math assessment. So that was three or four points, depending on the subjects, subject lower than the 95% required by the state and federal governments. As I mentioned before, less than 1% of students took the DLM, but those students are reflected in our math and, and English Language Arts participation rates. Attached to your board memo is a report from the state showing our participation rate by student subgroup. And when you look at that report, what you will see is that participation was relatively uniform when we look by gender, when we look by race, when we look by income. It bumps up and down a couple of percentage points depending on what student subgroup that you look at. The one group of students that I would call out as having a participation rate that is a little bit different from the district as a whole are the students with an individualized education plan. Those students had an 86% participation rate in both reading and in math. And so that's about five or six points, percentage points lower than the participation rate of other students. So as we interpret these data, I think a 92 or 91 or 92% participation rate, given pretty similar participation rates by gender, race, and income status, should be fairly representative of the district. But I note this just to say that if it is not representative of some group of students, it is likely that it's our group of students with disabilities where we have almost 15% of students who weren't tested. So now I want to get into, first, the proficiency results for English Language Arts and then in math. And I'll also show you the proficiency for each of the performance categories, not just meets and exceeds. So I've got a chart here that I will sort of walk you through from left to right and then kind of make some comments about how to interpret it. What I have done here is to show in all the left-hand sidebars except the, the rightmost yellow bar, different measurements of proficiency that we have seen in District 65 over the last two years. And I think it's worth going through this in detail because I think one of the things that we have to deal with, given the fact that we've had the ISAT, we had a local norm on the ISAT that was more rigorous and likely, as you see in the data, more predictive. we had a local, um, norm on the ISAT that was more rigorous and likely, um, as you see in the data, more predictive of what the level of proficiency really is. And then we've had the map assessment and now we have park and DLM. There's a lot of data to sort of weed through and say, so, okay, great, what percentage of our students are actually proficient? So it's a topic that I can give you some information on tonight and it's also something that we're really looking into in detail in order to be able to answer that question well and to, um, settle on a final bar that we would use going forward. So the left two bars represent proficiency on the ISAT, um, for last year. So we had 60% proficiency using the, um, standard that was adopted by District 65, a 73% proficiency rate with the standard that had been adopted by the state. And then when we look at this year's results, um, on MAP, we see a 50% um, percent of students who were proficient, um, at college-ready levels. And on PARK, 49%. So pretty good agreement between those two numbers. But a drop of about 10 percentage points from last year's ISAT, um, results. And then I'll just mention the DLM has a 28% proficiency rate. The measurement here is quite different. So I think we need, as a district, to dig into this a little bit more to understand how comparable it is to the other, other data. So putting DLM aside for a minute and putting aside the meets and exceeds cut point that we already, um, have sort of dismissed as being, um, far too low, we were left with three different bars of proficiency in English Language Arts. Last year's ISAT with our norms would tell us 60% are proficient. This year's MAP would tell us that 50% are proficient and PARK would tell us that 49% of students are proficient. So gives us basically an 11-point band between 49 and 60% of, um, the percent of students who are proficient, um, in English Language Arts. And what we will do going forward, as we look at the new college-ready benchmarks that, um, have been put out by MAP, and as we try to understand more about what's happening in the state data, I reached out to Paul Zapotowski, who's done some research, um, at the state level. We'll try to understand what's going on with these, um, different bars and, and come back, um, in the coming months with a recommendation about where we need to set the cut point for proficiency. What I would point out also is that when we look at the state, we see 38% of the students across the state were proficient on the PARK bar. And so we're certainly about 11 percentage points higher than the state average. I'll just pause here for a second and show you the results, um, for each of the five different performance bands that, um, we see on the PARK and also for the four performance bands that are on the, um, DLM. And what you can see here is that District 65 is above the Illinois average in terms of students scoring a four or a five, and lower than the state average of students scoring a one, two, or a three. And so we are not, we outperform the state not only in proficiency, but also in the percent of students who exceed. And then we underperform, which is what we would want to do, the percentage of students scoring a one, two, or a three. When we look at the, um, DLM results, and this is an area that we need to dig in a little bit more to understand what might be going on. We have more students in that, um, first category, uh, the lowest category of performance, about the same in the second, and then less in the third and less in the fourth. So we're not seeing in DLM the trend that we would want to see here. I've then pulled scores for our neighboring districts and then I'll show you in a moment, scores for our comparable districts. When you look at the neighboring districts, um, all of, all of them, except for one, CPS, score, um, above the state average. And we score, um, in the first quartile of these neighboring districts. But I would point out that when you look at the next, um, four districts ahead of us in line, we're at 49 and they're at 50 and 52. So there's not a dramatic difference between us and neighboring districts until you get into that third quartile. Then looking at comparable districts, you'll see here that we, um, are really pretty much right in the middle of the pack. Our comparable districts, um, all except one, outperform the state average, as do our neighboring districts. But we fall right in line with the middle of these districts. And just to refresh your memory from last year's Achievement and Accountability Report, these are districts that are like us both in the fact that they spend more than the state average and also that they have between 25 and 50% of students who receive a free or reduced-priced lunch. So they're like us in terms of the property wealth that is available to fund education, as well as like us in terms of the challenges that the student body may bring into the schoolhouse door. Here you'll see the, um, ELA results broken down by demographic subgroup. And, um, you can clearly see here, um, the information broken down for, um, each of our racial subgroups, our students who receive a free, reduced-priced lunch, those who, um, are ELLs, those who, um, have an individualized education plan, and then also for males and females. And you can see the trends in terms of the gaps are very similar to, um, what we have previously estimated with MAP and what we discussed earlier on tonight. So then just, um, moving on to math. Here you've got the same bars that I discussed for, um, re, for English Language Arts. And what you can see here is that while the PARK results, um, and the MAP results for 2015 were very closely aligned, when we looked at ELA, there's more of a gap in terms of, um, what we're estimating between those two bars in math. So 39% of students are estimated to be college and career-ready on MAP compared to 47% on PARK and 57% on last year's ISAT. So there's more variability in where those bars are falling on this math assessment, on these three different math assessments than what we saw in English Language Arts. And again, this is a topic that we're researching and trying to understand so that we can make a good recommendation of which bar we should choose, um, on MAP going forward, as well as understanding the relationship between proficiency on MAP and proficiency on the PARK exam. I would point out when you look at this, that the, um, percent of students who are proficient across the state on math is quite different from the percent who are proficient in English Language Arts. So almost a 10% difference there. And so that mirrors the, the difference in scores in District 65, um, matching up with the difference in scores across the state. You've also got, um, in your packet and on this slide, the results, um, by performance level. And you can see here, um, a similar trend on PARK, uh, for math as we saw on, um, English Language Arts. And here you can see that, um, a much higher percentage of students are scoring four and also a much higher percentage of students are scoring five than across the state. And, um, you can see that there is a, a similar trend on DLM in math, um, compared to what I described in English Language Arts. So then turning to the neighboring districts, um, here we fall in the second quartile. But when you look at the two graphs, um, English Language Arts and Math, you see that, given the fact that there are many districts kind of right in there between 47 and 52%, that, um, we are, are doing pretty much as well as about three-quarters of the, um, neighboring districts. And then when you look at the, uh, comparable districts, here we fall, fall in the third quartile. And again, there's a lot of consistency in performance, but what I would say is the best performing comparable district was at 50%. And so when it comes to math, um, it looks like we're doing, according to the PARK test, um, about as well as any one of those comparable districts. Looking at the achievement gaps here, um, I won't go into it in, um, detail, other than, um, to note that, um, when you look at the, um, gap between males and females, um, here, um, you see, uh, a pretty similar story to MAP, whereas on the English Language Arts chart, you saw a larger gap, um, by gender than you did on MAP. Otherwise, we're seeing very similar patterns to, um, what we would have expected based on the MAP, which is, you know, large achievement gaps, both by race, um, and by income status. The last thing I just wanted to go through with you is our, our communication strategy. So last week, um, we, um, tried to make sure that in advance of the results getting out, um, we were communicating well with all of our stakeholders. So, um, we met with principals on Monday, uh, by Wednesday, we had an email out to principals. And by Thursday, we had emailed teachers and families as well. And then also we got the information updated on our District 65 website so that families could begin to understand what the PARK results mean. Early on in January, we planned to do two things. One is to distribute, um, rosters of data for current students to their teachers, um, so that they can see how the, the students in their classroom performed last year, as well as get individual student reports out to families. Then a little bit later on in January, we're going to host some information sessions for staff. We know there's a lot of information here, which, um, I have just breezed through in a very short amount of time and that, um, staff will have as many questions as, as you may have. And so we want to invite teachers and principals and others from our schools to come and learn with us. And then in February, we're going to host an information session for parents, both to answer any questions they may have about the results that they got, as well as to help them understand, um, what will be different in the PARK exam next year. And so just to preview for you, a few of those modifications, which largely come from feedback that the PARK Consortium received from, um, community members in districts like ours. One thing that's going to happen is there's going to be one testing window instead of two. And so a lot fewer weeks will be spent organizing PARK tests, tests than were spent last year. They've reduced the number of test units from, um, eight or nine to six or seven, depending on which grade level. And in terms of actual time, um, that will reduce testing time by about 90 minutes, 30 minutes in English Language Arts and 16 minutes in mathematics. So that concludes, um, the remarks that I've got and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Peter. Questions?
Just a real quick one. These modifications, are those, um, state, the state of Illinois made those modifications?
They're modifications made by the PARK Consortium, so they will be for Illinois and all the other states implementing PARK.
Oh, okay.
Do you guys have any estimation of the size of the effect of kids who don't have good typing skills, the technical problems that happened in our district? Like, and the bearing on any, like, do we have a sense of, like, have you guys collected, like, the, the other factors?
So we don't have any data, um, I don't have any quantitative data that would say this is the effect of those types of concerns on students' scores. What I would say is that during the implementation last year, I was very surprised by, um, the experience of students and teachers in the administration of the assessment as compared to, um, what we feared may be the experiences of teachers and students during the assessment. So.
Surprised good.
Surprised good. Yeah. So we, we operate a help desk. And I would say that the vast majority, like more than 60% of, um, concerns came because everything was so new that accommodations had been set up incorrectly. And so therefore, when it came time to get ready to give the student the test, the test wasn't ready for the student and we had to go back and fix the accommodations. There were also some, a handful of issues compared to the number of students that we were assessing, where, um, students found that certain buttons could, um, interrupt a test and so that interrupted their testing session. We invalidated, um, the test when those, um, things occurred. And it was a lot of work for our team, but there weren't overall that many tests that were invalidated.
Thank you.
Is that purposeful invalidation on the part of the students or was it by mistake invalidation?
Both. Um, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you put a test in front, if you put a computer in front of a kid and they find something neat that they can do with it.
Sure.
They will do that.
Yeah, and.
And that's, and so there were instructions about which test to invalidate based on exactly this issue.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that happens with the MAP test too, so.
I really appreciate the, uh, charts that compare to comparable districts and surrounding districts. And just an ask for the future, I know that you had given us the chart of, um, the, the factors that you described that went into choosing the, the comparable districts. If you could just include that so we have that for reference.
Yeah, sure.
I just, to try and make some comparisons between the data, the data we see here and, and the data that had us choose those districts. Thanks.
I'll add a comment to, to what Richard had said on the comparable, especially, I looked especially at the comparable districts. And I went back to look at, and I know it's not apples to apples because last year when you provided that data was MAP data. But it did show that, um, you know, last year we were in the bottom 50% on both MAP and reading and those, for those comparables. And this year in math, it was the third quartile, which I'll take any promising data that I see. So I think that's good. My, my curiosity leads me to, is there any way, and I know this would be extra work, but is there any way for us to look at those comparables on a disaggregated basis on subgroups as well? So we could start to see whether, um, to the other, other questions, you know, within those aggregates, are there places that we are doing much better or not as, as well? And I know different districts have different levels of racial diversity. Certainly, this was based on just free and reduced lunch. But, um, I think that that would be useful if we continue to use the comparable and neighboring districts. I would say it more in the comparable side than the neighboring districts because we don't see as much diversity in those, but.
How disaggregated do you want it? That's a big ask, I think.
Well, I'm just thinking, I don't know how easy it is, but, you know, disaggregated would be just taking it into subgroups and racial subgroups.
Yes.
So because we, you know, we talked earlier tonight, we've talked in the past, when you take out free and reduced lunch, there's still a 40%, 39% achievement gap, um, with respect to African-American students and similar like Tina. So I'm curious as to whether, you know, how that, how those things hold true for other districts? And do, are they seeing those, that same kind of separate systemic issue outside of just the free and reduced lunch?
So, um, it's not that difficult to do. I mean, it's base, it's all publicly reported. So it's literally a matter of looking 15 districts up on the state report card and pulling the information. So I'd be glad to do it. Um, I would recommend we start with income. Because one of the things I learned when I went to find the comparable districts is that, um, once you limit districts just by two, the two factors I mentioned, having more than the state average spending and having between 25 and 50% free, reduced-priced lunch, you bring it down to this very small number of school districts. And when you, and I, I'm glad to bring the, um, information forward. But when you look in the back of the 2014 Achievement and Accountability Report that has the demographic data for these districts, there's some wide disparity between, um, racial, um, makeup. And partly that is because Evanston is a very unique community in Illinois in terms of having, um, economic and, um, racial diversity within one school district.
Well, I guess the question would be, even with, I'm not saying a different set of districts, I was just saying.
Yeah.
You know, take these.
How are they doing with each of those groups?
And maybe a subsection of those that are, you know, Evergreen Park, Flossmore, I mean, those that we know still have, uh, Oak Park that have a considerable percentage of similar, you know, racial diversity.
Yeah. That's easy enough for us to do.
Hi, I was.
Can you speak a little bit more about your further analysis of the relationship among these three tests?
Yeah.
And whether there's any hope that you'll get to the point where they, you understand the alignment enough that we would see whether, you know, we could see relationships between yours with these tests at all, or whether that sort of way?
So I think that the, the ISAT is really kind of, it's sort of past history and so it's there for comparison. So I think what I really want to understand first is the relationship between MAP and PARK. And on MAP, there are two different sets of benchmarks that have been established, one in 2012 and one in 2015. When you look at the English Language Arts benchmarks, you can see for District 65 that, um, the MAP 2012 benchmark that is reported here and the PARK results for District 65, um, are very similar. That having been said, it's two tests with two different sets of items and two sets of benchmarks that were established in different ways. One on MAP entirely done with a predictive model, one on PARK that's done with a combination of predictive and looking at student, student work on the test compared to the, the actual descriptors of performance. So the missing piece in my mind to finish figuring out, okay, looking at this, I'd say, oh, those are pretty similar. Well, maybe we should just choose that. The missing piece is how well does the, um, PARK proficiency cut point, um, The missing piece is how well does the PARC proficiency cut point at the state level match up with the ISAT cut point that we had chosen as a district? And my understanding from Chicago Tonight interview with Paul Zabtowski is that those actually line up pretty well at the state level. So, it leaves me with a question of, if we've got 60 percent proficient last year and the cut point is made somewhere near the same percentile, why do we have 50 percent this year? And I don't totally know the answer to that yet, and that's why I've reached out to Paul and also I'm trying to dig through this and understand at a student level what's happening. I don't have a good explanation yet for that.
Thank you very much.
We're working it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I just want to say thank you to you, Peter, and your team for consistently presenting data that we generally can understand, even though you have to educate us because you're more expert than we are. But it really, as we go to make decisions, it helps us make better informed choices. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me echo that, because we also have got the data, and we had to do as rapid a turnaround as possible to be able to get it in some understandable fashion.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. We've lost the agenda. I think we are on committee reports. Oh, our next, our finance meeting is February 8th, our regular board meeting is January 25th. The committee reports, Cradle of the Career...
Cradle of the Career continues. Obviously, the context of tonight's discussion is really quite important. There is a retreat of the Cradle of the Career partners at the end of January, where, and I have actually a meeting with Sheila and Mary this week, I'm also on the planning committee, but it's obvious if we combine the opening conversation we had with the PARC results that we have, with the urgency that we have to really focus on in the spirit of Cradle of the Career, community literacy, that we're gonna, I'm gonna want to push even harder to get to some point of what we're doing and how we're producing. So, that, stay tuned.
Great, yeah, okay. Evanston Community School Initiative?
We actually had a meeting earlier today to kind of...
Was that still today?
Yes, that was today. Forty-five minutes left in today, in terms of regrouping now that Erin Moore has taken over UC Carpenter's role as Director of Community Schools, which is very exciting. And continuing on what we had outlined, you know, basically end of last year, that this year will be a planning year, going through to evaluate what's happened at SHOOT, put together a model, an evaluation model for going forward, and make it really very clear what the, kind of the goals and the logic model on how community school operates. So, all those pieces have been, most of those pieces have been drafted and are coming back together to kind of refine and figure out when that comes forward to decision-making groups like YW Board and R board. Does that make sense, Maria? You're probably the most alert of them.
Good, okay. Head Start Early Childhood?
So, Katrina put in a report that's in the packet. There's a Region 5 Department of Health and Human Services site visit on January 12th, 13th. She put in the phone numbers for recruitment. There's still open slots for regular Head Start, as we pointed out, I think, a whole month ago at the regular board meeting. I know I've been, I put a message on the PTA District Council, and I've been trying to get that message out, but anything that you guys can do in any venues you are in to mention that there are, you know, slots, and the phone numbers are all in this packet.
Joint 65-22 Committee, our next meeting is January 21st. I think the literacy goal will be front and center, and I don't think we have any, we don't have any new initiatives, just a continuation of a lot of our old subjects. Park School Advisory Report?
We met last week. We talked about student enrollment for a big portion of it. Last year, we had 65 and a half students, on average, over the course of the year, and right now, we have 72, in part because of program movement. And Peter made a nice presentation about how we might project out, and essentially concluded it's really difficult to project the population with a, within a narrow range, but within a wider range, it's easier to predict. What am I missing? I feel like that was the biggest...
I could only hear a third of that conversation.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, my wish is not to have it...
We talked a little bit too about the, some of the efforts to attract...
Yeah, and was next on the meeting, I think a year ago, we were concerned about whether or not enrollment would pick up, or we would attract more students, and indeed, we have by some programmatic changes that have brought some students back to the district. And that sort of leaves us in a, the tone of the meeting was very progressive in moving forward together, both institutions supporting.
Absolutely. I think compared to where we were a year ago, it was incredibly collaborative, and both districts are working to identify students who might next year be served better at PARC and are currently served outside of the district. So, to be able to educate those students in their home community and also save the district some money. So, you know, we don't know if that will actually happen, but that's the thinking that we're building toward.
Policy Committee?
We have our next meeting on January 11th. Already have a very full agenda. We'll continue discussion about promotion, grade level promotion, discussion on, like, timeline to discuss, like, our assessments and curriculum review schedules, and discipline, particularly in light of new state law that came down regarding suspensions, and the role of district partnerships with religious organizations. Okay. That's on the discipline list.
Okay, Wellness Council?
I unfortunately don't have a, I was not able to make the meeting this week, so I don't have that update, sorry.
All right. Informal presentations for the public. Diane. Okay.
So, are we gonna, so, were we gonna have time to say something about the ISAT?
Oh, yes. You know, I thought it was in our...
It was in the beginning, but it...
You know what? Maybe we should save that for January. I think, in those, it's quick.
One thirty seconds.
Okay.
There are two field trip site visit offers on the table that I'd really like to make sure that we follow up on if anyone is interested. One is to go meet with the folks at 219 Niles North West and District 69. And Paul, I know you've made contact with Dr. Kossen at District 69, but it's spelled out in the paragraph I wrote, all the materials from the conference are available to all of us, including the videos. But they have, you know, on the high school level, it's a little less relevant, on the K8 level, they're basically, they have, 219 has a joint agreement, like we do on literacy, but in STEM, especially computer science and engineering. They have a program called Classrooms First that's looking at kids who code and kids who engineer for fourth and fifth grades. It's just, it's something to take a look at. I know administration folks have been trying to get in to talk to those folks, but we have an open invitation to do that, so I'd like to follow up sooner rather than later. And then, the second is Deerfield District 109, if anyone wants to go see their middle school STEM labs, they used existing space, right? So, it was to re-model their traditional spaces into being more 21st century and learning labs. And the story of how they looked at design and achievement is fascinating. So, I just want to make sure that those are things that could happen sooner rather than later.
Thank you. And you were gonna report, but you...
My topics were not nearly titillating. I will let you read them though.
Okay, we'll ask questions for next...
I would say the only interesting thing to read more about and for us to learn more about is the New Balanced Accountability Model for the state, which is basically, as opposed to us being purely accountable based on, you know, standardized test scores, they've built a model that expands on that with some more qualitative measures, and it's interesting. I don't, I don't know how I actually feel about it personally, but it's interesting, and it's something that maybe we should bring back to the board at some point to explain it to us, because I know it's still in development, and it'll be introduced over a five-year period, so there's certainly time. But it's quite a departure from how things have worked in the past, for sure, so...
Candace and I went to an excellent session on contract negotiation, and I went to a session on the para negotiations, which I can report in another time.
Okay, great. And I can talk about the Nutria referendum, which all the materials in there... It was a terrific presentation, the slides are there. Happy to take any questions outside of this meeting on that. And can I make a motion about a working meeting, or at least exploring it?
I think we should explore it. I'm not sure we're ready to vote on a motion now until we can get...
So, maybe just, can I just say that I think it's worth thinking about an April Working Board meeting to follow up on the community conversation? Just exploratory to see if there's, you know, bandwidth in the board calendar to actually set a date and proactively follow up on tonight's conversation.
Did you say for April?
April seems reasonable, maybe March, I don't, I don't know. I think, I think the question is, it's exploratory. I think administration needs to look at the board calendar and tell us, like, could you get another, could we have a working meeting in one of the spring months?
Yes. I'm also hoping some of the questions posed by Terry in the NAAC, the Education Committee, we can address in the Achievement and Accountability Report, because they do touch on a lot of the issues that we should be, so a full board meeting would be great, but I think we'll get to it sooner than...
No.
Hopefully.
Did we get a written copy of the questions?
Yes.
I think she did, yeah.
There's no more, nothing more before the board, I find this meeting adjourned.